City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation by Councilman Goldberg, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I am the Creator and Sustainer of all that is or will ever be, accept our thanks for the day and all of its blessings. We ask that you guide and direct our actions. Grant that each of us may feel our responsibility to our community and Commonwealth and our nation. Bless everyone present today, and we ask for all of this in your holy name. Let us say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of July the 21st, 2021 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712, the Code of Virginia. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
Motion is ordered. What's the pleasure, Council? Councilman Fawcett?
To approve.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please, council members, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We'll now move to approval of the minutes from the January 21, 2021 work session and regular meeting. A motion is in order. What's the pleasure of Council? Councilman Johnson?
Moved to approve.
Councilman Williams?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Johnson and a second by Councilman Williams. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Members of Council, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We're now moved to special presentations. Our first special presentation is a 2021 National Night Out invitation. Mr. Manager, please present an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. On August 3rd, the city will celebrate this year's National Night Out with our neighborhoods and also our community partners. The Director of Media, Diana Klink, and interim Police Chief Al Chandler will provide an overview and a briefing on the upcoming event. Diane?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, and City Manager. Interim Chief Alfred Chandler, fellow members of the National Night Out Committee, and I are here tonight to extend an invitation. It's hard to believe that National Night Out is just 13 days away. Many communities, civic leagues, homeowners associations, churches, businesses, organizations, and sponsors across our entire city have been working tirelessly coordinating what we like to call our going-away parties for crime. No one else in Hampton Roads celebrates like we do, and we've got five national first-place trophies to prove it. This year's celebration is more important than perhaps any other in our recent history. National Night Out is about celebrating the positivity of what unites all of us and not the negativity we've all seen and heard about across our nation. There's absolutely no way to measure the value that can be placed upon the friendships and relationships that are forged between our public safety partners and our citizens as we reconnect with one another during this celebration. Communication and mutual respect is essential to building a safe and strong community. At this time, we'd like to share a brief video reminder of the great times we had in previous years, especially since our 2020 celebration was canceled due to COVID. Roll it, Andy. Mayor Dooman, could you please join interim Chief Alfred Chandler to present the proclamation, after which he'll provide remarks in his personal invitation to our citizens. We'll deliver your official National Night Out T-shirts for the big night.
Madam Clerk, could you please present the proclamation?
Whereas the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime prevention program on August 3rd, 2021, known as National Night Out, and whereas the 31st, 38th Annual National Night Out provides a wonderful opportunity for the City of Suffolk to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police-community crime prevention programs, and whereas our locality plays a vital role in assisting all of its public safety agencies, and whereas it is essential that all citizens be aware of the importance of crime prevention programs and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime. Now therefore I, Michael D. Dooman, Mayor of the City of Suffolk, Virginia, do hereby proclaim August 3rd, 2021 as National Night Out, and call upon all citizens to participate in this important event that celebrates the value of safe communities. And witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Suffolk to be affixed this 21st day of July in the year of our Lord 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and Members of Council for this proclamation for the 2021 National Night Out event. Our city has a rich history of food, fun, and community fellowship when it comes to National Night Out. It's a great time for us as a community of people, helping and caring for each other, to come together and celebrate our city. But let us not forget the important message and objective of this night. National Night Out is designed to raise crime prevention awareness, generate support for anti-crime efforts, generate participation in those anti-crime efforts, strengthen community partnerships, and send a message to criminals that we are fighting back against crime. Now more than ever, it's very important that we all stand together, hand in hand, with one voice proclaiming that violence will not rule our streets. This is a celebration for, I'm sorry, this is a celebration of our commitment to do our part, both individually and collectively, to fight crime. This is a reaffirmation that law enforcement and citizens are working together, building safer streets, better neighborhoods, and stronger communities. National Night Out is a celebration of people helping people. It is a celebration of great communities. It's a celebration of the great relationship our law enforcement departments have with our community, and it's a celebration of safer streets that we can have all working together. So I would like to invite each and every citizen, each of you, each person listening, each person that is connected to this city, to join us Tuesday, August 3rd, for this year's National Night Out celebration. And you can find more information in reference to party locations by going to SuffolkNNO.com. Again, thank you very much.
Our second special presentation is the Suffolk Police Department's Explorers Program. Mr. Manager?
Oh, bags.
I didn't see the goodies coming. You gotta let me know we're getting presents. Move things along. Move things along, man. I didn't see the goodies coming. Now we're going to move to our next special presentation. Suffolk Police Department's Explorers Program. Mr. Manager, please present an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, interim Police Chief Chandler will provide an overview of the Police Department's Explorer Program and introduce our explorers. Chief?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and Members of Council, I am pleased to announce on behalf of the Suffolk Police Department the relaunch of our Suffolk Police Explorer Post Number 124. Law enforcement exploring is a hands-on program open to young people from sixth grade on up to the age of 20. This program is for young people interested in careers in law enforcement or related fields within the criminal justice system. This program, in conjunction with the Boy Scouts of America, offers young adults a personal awareness of criminal justice system through training, practical experience, competition, as well as other activities. Furthermore, the program promotes personal growth through character development, respect for the rule of law, physical fitness, good citizenship, and patriotism. At this time, I would like to introduce to you our newly inducted explorers. Explorer Casey Cale, Explorer Jacob Myrick, Explorer Nia Garner, Explorer Audrey Heilman, Explorer Ryan Ben Dixon, Explorer Xander Stout, Explorer Ash, I'm sorry, Dylan Ashpole, Explorer Jason Spitler, Explorer Ezekiel Hudson, and Explorer Zachary Smith. We are indeed excited to reestablish Post 124, and particularly excited about this amazing group of young people that we have to work with. We find great joy in having the opportunity to work with the future of our city, and we are grateful that we have alumni of police explorer programs that are now seasoned professionals within our department. Eager to give back, Lieutenant Gary Myrick, Crime Scene Investigation Supervisor Jalissa Armstrong, and Sergeant Herman Key jumped at the opportunity to provide young people with the same wonderful opportunity that led them to having long, highly decorated, and successful careers in law enforcement. We're also pleased to have with us today Lauren Howell and Anthony Stewart, regional representatives from Boy Scouts of America. Members of Council, I stand before you today thanking you and our City Manager for the support of this program and these young people. We believe that our children indeed are our future, and our future, as you can see, is very bright. Thank you very much for your time, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions, Council? Comments? Thank you very much, Chief, and Vice Mayor. I'm sorry, we did have a few comments. Vice Mayor Bennett?
Thank you, Mayor. And to Chief Chandler, Sergeant Key, and Lieutenant Myrick, and two of the recruits, it's indeed a pleasure for me to see you tonight. This is a program that was, had been established some years back, and it sort of, they disbanded. So I talked to the City Manager about bringing this back on, and I remember that Lieutenant Myrick, Sergeant Key was still a part of the Police Department, and they came through the Explorer Program. So I know that there are good products that come from the explorers. So they have been able to share a lot, I'm sure, with you all what the Explorer is all about, and the future that you could have with this great city. So I'm happy, Mr. Manager, and Chief Chandler, and all that's involved with getting this program back up and running. I am very, very excited to see this happen, for our young people to be able to get involved with the criminal justice of this city. Again, thank you very much for volunteering to explore this program, and I'm sure that some of you are looking forward to being one of these police officers that might be Police Chief one day. So we congratulate you again.
Any other comments? If not, thank you, and once again, thanks for participating. Thank you, Chief, for putting this together, and I look forward to having some homegrown officers on the force here shortly. So we'll be here for your badge pinning, or some of us will be here for your badge pinning. Or we might just show up for your badge pinning. Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, we're going to consider the removal of consent agenda items and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. But before doing so, I would like to make one statement in regards to the July 7th, 2021 City Council meeting. There was a motion to schedule a public hearing to be held on July 21st, 2021 to receive public comment on changes to the transit routes per the Transit Master Plan. At this time, I would like to defer to the City Manager to address this issue.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, unfortunately, that proposed public hearing will not take place this evening. We wanted to provide an update in case that we have any citizens here this evening who want to speak on that item. We still need to have that public hearing. We'll bring that back to you on August 18th. We would request, as part of your new business, that a motion be made this evening to schedule that new public hearing on August 18th for the proposed route changes in the master transit plan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manager. We will now consider the removal of the consent agenda items and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of City Council wishes to vote on a specific item separately, and a motion would be required. Questions and requests for information on specific agenda items can be addressed during the consideration of the consent agenda after the agenda speakers. If there are any items that Members of City Council wish to remove from the consent agenda to be voted on separately, a motion would be appropriate at this time. If not, a motion to adopt the agenda in its entirety as presented would be appropriate at this time. What's the pleasure of Council? We have Councilman Johnson?
Moved to accept as presented.
Councilman Goldberg?
Second, Mayor.
We have a first and a second. Do we have any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Members of Council, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We'll now move on to agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers at this time?
Yes, Mayor Dooman. Devon Pink-Pilkington, 304 West Liberty Spring Road, representing self regarding item 24, an ordinance to grant relief from the 10-year post conveyance holding period for a parcel of land identified as Tax Map Parcel 545C1, created through a family transfer conveyance in accordance with Section 31-514 of the Unified Development Ordinance.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, City Manager, Vice Mayor. I'd like to open with the purchase and the intent of the Section 31-514 of the Unified Development Ordinance. To keep a family estate within the family and not for the purpose of short-term investment for the sale after division to those outside of the immediate family. It is further the intent to provide family members the ability to remain in close contact proximity as housing needs change to provide mutual opportunities for support and care of family members and to allow the preservation of family land holdings which might otherwise be fragmented for economic reasons. On March 15th, 2017, my first letter to City Council stating that our initial plans to have my brother and parents move to adjoining properties had fallen through due to my grandmother's health at the time, and they did not feel confident in making such a drastic change, and they stayed behind because my grandmother was sick. June 19th, 2018, as per the first letter, we came to you on the basis of family yet again. This second letter was no different, but rather under more serious circumstances as I had lost my father unexpectedly due to a heart attack at the young age of 52, three days before his 53rd birthday. Which brings us to today. Over three years later, I'm writing you yet again because we are asking to be relieved of the 10-year family transfers due to all the drastic life changes that we have experienced. that we have experienced over the course of these last seven years. It is very unlikely that we will never have any of our family members join us in the city of Suffolk as we had initially planned when we began this journey. For these last three years, I've been so hard on my family with losing our grandmother and then our father, who was truly the leader of our family. We have lived at our current residence for eight years this December 2021, making it very clear this was not a short-term investment and that we have gone over half the time living joyfully in our home. Per the whole reason behind Section 31-514 makes it very clear that family is the motivation behind this law. So I'm asking the city of Suffolk honor what they deem of importance and provide me the ability to be released from this 10-year family transfer so that we can move back closer to our family. I know here it says on Part III, our review of regulations, Section B, light item number three, it says, "A person receiving land through a family transfer subdivision may not sell, transfer, subdivide, or otherwise convey such property for a period of 10 years." A is such lots are subject to an involuntary transfer, such as by foreclosure, death, judicial sale, condemnation, bankruptcy, or illness certified by an attending physician. Number C, a city council may specify additional conditions to be imposed on a family transfer subdivision if it is, if an exception is sought from city council for the prior sale before the 10 years. Back in March of 2015, or March 15, 2017, I'm sorry, we did have a vote, and Vice Mayor Bennett, on a motion to second by City Councilmember Johnson, moved to deny the ordinance as presented by the following vote. As at the time were Mayor Johnson, Vice Mayor Bennett, council members Fawcett, Goldberg, Johnson, and Ward. Nays were Councilmember Dooman and Miltier. Y'all did side with me at that time, and I appreciated that, but it did not pass the vote at that time. Does, I'll answer any questions or anything if you have any.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
That concludes the speakers, Mayor.
Madam Clerk, please present the consent agenda items for city council's consideration.
Item number seven, an ordinance to add the mental health consultant position to the City of Suffolk Compensation Plan. Item number eight, an ordinance to accept and appropriate additional funds from the Virginia Department of Rail and Public Transportation for the City of Suffolk's public transit service. Item number nine, a resolution to endorse project applications under the Revenue Sharing Funding Program for fiscal years 2027 and 2028. Item 10, a resolution to endorse project applications under the Transportation Alternatives Funding Program. Item number 11, a resolution rescinding a local emergency. And item number 12, a resolution confirming the appointment of Carla D. Carter as Deputy City Attorney.
Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the items.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Item seven provides the addition of a new position within the police department entitled Mental Health Consultant. This new position will be a Grade 136 and will be a benefit to our public safety staff as it relates to mental health issues. Item eight accepts and appropriate $6,257 in state funding from the Virginia Department of Rail and Transportation into the city's FY2 Transit System Fund. This funding is in addition to what was previously anticipated with the adoption of the budget, so we do need to accept and appropriate this amount, and there's no local match required. Item nine, the city desires to submit applications for the allocation of funds up to $10 million to be matched through the Virginia Department of Transportation Revenue Sharing Program for fiscal years 2027 and 2028. Projects include our Shoulders Hill Road widening Phase 2 and 3, Route 58, Kimberly Bridge, East Constant Road, Penner Street. The resolution is requested as part of the application process. Item 10, the city desires to submit an application for allocation of funds under the Transportation Board's Alternatives Funding Program. The project staff requests endorsement for the next section of the Seaboard Coast Trail extending from Nassau Park Way to Pine Tree Way, which is approximately 1.25 miles. Resolution is requested as part of the application process. Item 11 rescends a local emergency, which was placed, put in place on March 13, 2020. The Director of Emergency Management signed the resolution to rescind on July 9, 2021 after the state rescension of theirs. Item 12, the resolution confirms the appointment of Carla D. Carter as the city's Deputy City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Does any member of council have any questions about any of the items presented? Hearing none, a motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to move to approve as it's been presented.
Councilman Goldberg?
Mayor, I'd like to second that motion, please.
We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, members of council, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, we'll now move to public hearings. Our first public hearing is an ordinance to accept and appropriate American Rescue Plan Act funds from the United States Department of Treasury to assist in the response and recovery of the COVID-19 pandemic. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, at your work session today, the Director of Finance and interim Deputy City Manager provided an NBEF presentation on the recommended projects to be funded through the American Rescue Plan Act funds. At this time, Kevin Hughes, the interim Deputy City Manager, will provide an overview for you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As you're aware, the city of Suffolk has received $30,065,206 from the American Rescue Plan Act. At your work session, as the manager outlined, we provided you with a detailed spending plan for impacting the citizens of the city of Suffolk. And I'll briefly run through a chart here that lays out the spending that's in your ordinance for recommendation for approval. And so, starting from the top, for nonprofit support, we would have an application process over the next four to five years. We would propose $1,515,269,000. Then, moving into water, sewer, stormwater, and broadband infrastructure, we're proposing $5 million related to contribution for the South Side Network Authority. On a local level, we're proposing $3 million for rural expansion of broadband. Moving into some of our neighborhood villages, an Oakland water project at $2 million. Oakland sewer project proposed at $6 million in coordination with a petition process. Oakland stormwater of $6 million. Williamstown Water and Sewer Investment of $1 million. Pewsville Stormwater of $2 million. Lloyd Place and Rosemont Stormwater of $1,275,000. South Suffolk and Mount Pleasant Stormwater Investment of $1,275,000. And then, East Washington Street Stormwater around the 2,500 block of $1 million. And this would all be within keeping of the ARPA guidelines related to their rules and regulations, and we'd be working within their obligation or our requirement to obligate those funds by 2024 and spend them by December 31, 2026. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have following the public hearing.
Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address?
Good evening, my name is Carolyn White. I live at 4216 Coltrane Avenue in the city of Suffolk. How's everybody doing? I read this article, 289 pages, last night, and I looked in here and saw Pewsville Stormwater improvement, $2 million. Now, I don't know if you all are aware, but in the CIP, for 2016, $2 million went into the CIP for Pewsville Stormwater Drainage. And now again, we are here again today, another $2 million, but nothing is done. Is this going to be a project that's going to get started right away? Are you going to hold us another 20 to 14 years, 14 to 20 years, and saying, "We're coming. We're going to get it done"? And as the mayor spoke at the town hall meeting on June 28, that $3.7 million was going into the account? So is that going into the account along with this $2 million? That's what you're telling me, Mayor?
Yes.
I like, I like to have it in writing. Sometime, we shake our heads and nobody saw that. But if you can put that in writing, and we can get started on this, and you also said that we can get started sooner than later because the developers are coming, the Afghanistan military is coming home, and you're already building everything in Pewsville for the military, so we need to get started. And I have something tonight for Mr. Roberts. I have the plan. Everybody looking for a plan. Casa Developments that you allowed to build on the master drainage plan gave me the price of the pipe. Here's a picture of the pipe, even the place to go and get the pipes. I'm going to give this to Mr. Robert Lewis in all of your hearing. So if anything goes wrong, talk to Robert. Thank you. Hi, Robert.
Our next speaker, please.
Good evening. A little bit too much allergy medicine, so I'm going to speak slow tonight. We want to thank you for receiving the American Recovery Act money for the communities, especially for the Oakland community. We, my name is Kelly Hengler. I'm at 9345 Eclipse Drive in Suffolk, Virginia, but I am also the Civic League Executive President for Kretin Eclipse in Hobson. And we do take special note that one of the requests that came forward, and we'd like this on the record, please, is that we do need to have more meetings regarding sanitation. We have discovered a number of the elders who have not yet signed up for the tax relief because they were confused about the process, and neighbors within Oakland and Chukatack are helping them through the process because that will go to how much may be offset for them in the $6,500 and the $1,500 that it will cost for them to connect to sanitation when it does come. So we need a little bit more outreach. That area is rural. It is beloved by us, and we have some other members here with us tonight. But we're very, very thankful for that and for the money designated to the downtown communities as well. 1646 is a long time to be here to now, and there's a lot that's been built on and rebuilt on, and these communities have dug their own well systems, including Kretin Eclipse had dug their own, Oakland and Chukatack, as well as Pewsville. So we're still in transition as the city is receiving all of our military, as she mentioned. We were in touch with our Department of Defense contacts that we have as citizens, and knowing how many military are inbound, Department of Defense civilians and others moving to the area. So we thank you so much that we might have an opportunity to get services into these communities before more, let's say, side effects. All right, thank you.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. I'm Pamela Brandy. I live at 5016 Pearl Street, Chesapeake, Virginia. I am the Vice President of Pewsville Civic League. I've came here before, and I'm going to continue to come. However, during the town hall meeting that we had at Chukatack in Oakland, I spoke out. I recorded everything that was said by each person. Also, you also came to the National Night Out. I recorded everything that everyone said. However, I listened to what was said about the money that now going to come. Okay, it's coming, but what about the money that you already have, that you have not did anything in our communities? When I spoke out at the town hall meeting for Chukatack, you know, I heard, and I knew you heard that they were saying that they have sewage and poop in their homes because of the new development that you all are allowing builders to build on top of the homes that they already have, not just in Oakland, Chukatack, Pewsville, and other African-American communities that you are not doing anything about. But when I look all over Suffolk, Harvey View, everywhere, again, you're prospering off of the back of the residents that have been paying taxes for years for stormwater. You haven't came out and cleaned out any COVIDs since you put them in. They're overgrown, they backed up. When are you going to get the work done? They cannot wait a year. They can't even wait now. They need it immediately. An emergency fund needs to be done. I see that you're already tapping into years of funding that's coming, but it's time to tap into us. And you talk about the National Night Out, and you know, we think that the police is coming together so, you know, because we cut down on crime. Isn't it a crime to take the money from the residents for all the taxes that they're paying but not give them any service? We're saying, we need the help. What we talk about is not new, it's old. So, City Manager, we'd like to see funding and actual work being done in all of the communities now. And we keep hearing the number three. Again, it's the Father, Son, and Holy Ghost. And we talk about, you know, we doing things in God, and we working together to take care of the community and everything. Were we also the community? And we coming to you all that makes the decision. We ask you now to put the work in. And we like to see it done now before somebody else dies because of the sewage, the baggage, all the stuff that's in the water. What about helping all of God's children? Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Do we have any other speakers to speak to this ordinance?
Good evening. My name is Claudia Holland, and I live at 9351 Riverside Drive. And I am the Heritage President of the CENH Civic League. I'd just like to say that I am in support of the funding from this American Rescue Plan going towards these very deserving projects. And unfortunately, I think our representative from Hobson is not here tonight, so maybe we can get them to that discussion going a little bit later. That's it, thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Yes, my name is Ronnie G. Newsome. I have this one 401 shared road in Chukatack. I'm coming this afternoon because you all, they called, I don't know what they call themselves doing. They put a sidewalk in it up higher than the road. Ronnie is causing a problem. Someone's going to be suing the city. Their cars come down and drop right down. They put some, put some ice, something down, and it stayed in about a week, not even a week, because there's a garage beside this driveway. And the ditch is overflowing all over there. This haven't been cleaned up since we married with this, Nassau County married with the city of Suffolk. I ditched haven't been cleaned up properly. So we looking for that, we need that. Out in Chukatack, our ditches need cleaning very bad. We ask you to consider it, please.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker. Do we have any other speakers to speak to this ordinance? Hearing none, this public hearing is now closed. An ordinance is presented for council's consideration, and a motion is in order. It was a pleasure of council. Councilman Fawcett.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a little observation of what we've talked about tonight with the rescue plan. The amount of money that you've got out to each one of the communities. The one thing that I look at in this rescue plan is this is a sizable amount of money. And even though it's, it's $30 million, it's $30 million less compression put on the taxpayer. And we can do some things with this 30 million. It's going to come in two, two armshirts. One is going to be this year, and then next June, we'll get the 15 million additional for the next year. So with that, I see these, these projects coming up that people have been asking for and, and down the line, this may alleviate some other funding that we can fuse into some of these projects to further them out. So everybody, if they would, just give us a chance. Contracts don't happen overnight. Now we've got some money to work with. We don't have to wait. We can start moving. You know, we've got probably more, more money in, in areas that we're going to put it in than we're going to have contractors. Because, believe me, if you look at the American Rescue Plan, Suffolk is only one city of many cities that have a lot of this money. And some of those cities have larger amounts of money than we have. And they're going to have, be on the lookout for contractors to do the work also. So we're going to have enough to go around. That's going to be something we're going to contend with. But this is great. This is great news for us. It's a great plan. I think the city's done a good job putting it together, Mr. Manager, to try to distribute it out along with your, your staff and finance. And we're trying to put it in all the places that really make sense. That's, that's the key to this. This is, this is where it's going to make sense. This is where people have been crying out to get things done. So I, I think you're going to start seeing the train move a little bit. And it's, you know, I know it's been a long time coming, but it looks to me, I see, I see the light at the end of the tunnel here, and I hope that we'll see very quickly, according to our City Manager, we should see contracts flying here pretty soon and things happening in different neighborhoods to start the projects. So with that, I'd like to make a motion tonight, Mayor, to go ahead and approve the document as it's been presented.
Okay, we have a motion and Councilperson Butler Barlow.
I would like to second Councilmember Fawcett's motion.
We get a second from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Any further discussion of the motion? Before adding, I would like, before voting, I would like to add one comment alluding to what Councilman Fawcett said. This will have a relatively immediate impact on some underserved neighborhoods where we have had these type of issues. But I also want everyone to understand that these are large projects. These are big projects. These are multimillion dollar projects. This is not a matter of sending someone out to clean a ditch. I mean, we are going to take care of addressing some issues right away that are temporary fixes to some of the conditions that we have. But these projects require engineering. They require contracting, and they may have right-of-way acquisition associated with them and then the actual construction. But do not be confused. We are on it and we will, I think it would be incumbent upon us to kind of give everyone maybe some type of progress report as we get started on some of these projects so the citizens know where, where we are. But don't look out your window next month and expect to see somebody out there, but that does not mean that it's not going to happen. The process does take time. The money that was in the Pewsville CIP stays in the Pewsville CIP, and this is additional money that will go towards that. A large allocation of this money that goes into Oakland and Chukatac, especially for the sewage, is still contingent upon the petition process. So we're in the process of doing that also. So once again, I want to thank the manager and the staff and everyone sitting up here for supporting these projects. And with that, we have a first and a second on the floor. And if there's no further discussion, I would like to ask everyone to prepare to vote. I'm sorry, I missed Councilman Ward. Excuse me, Councilman Ward.
I just want to say a few things, but first of all, the American Rescue Act, when we learned how much money that we was getting, I haven't seen, now Councilman on this dais wasn't happy, wasn't agreeable to that, and we almost said about time. So we was all grateful and thankful for that. What I wanted to say also is that, been on council eight years. The money that was allocated to Pewsville and any of my borough have never been swapped or went anywhere. So I, I want that to be known. If we said we're going to give you 3 million, that's what we're going to give you. We had that already. And just like the mayor said, sometime things take time, and you got contractors, you got to get all bids. So no money have been taken out of the CIP that was allocated for my borough. That additional 2 million, I'm glad that the community have been coming up here. I've been hearing that for years and always say, watch the CIP and come up. I'm very proud of y'all coming up and voicing your opinion. It don't hurt me at all because I'm used to it. But I, at work, you see how things work out. And even the young lady use God's kids, God's got a way of doing things. And when you work together and see what happened, we got money that we didn't know we wasn't about to get, so things are going on. And I'm glad that the mayor said, take time. But the money is not going nowhere. It's not going to disappear. You know, he got that money coming, and they're going to use that money in Pewsville. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Members of council, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, we'll now move to a bid opening and public hearing. We have an ordinance authorizing the City Manager to enter into a ground lease concerning approximately 0.67 acres, more or less, of city property located in the city of Suffolk, Virginia, and also being part of that property known as Tax Map Parcel Number 44 Asterix 62 for a term in excess of five years. This agenda item concerns an invitation for bids for a ground lease for a term not to exceed 30 years and comprised of approximately 0.67 acres located in the city of Suffolk and specifically located within the bounds of the certain parcel known as Tax Map Parcel Number 44 Asterix 62. Said parcel being the location of the Suffolk Executive Airport. Because the lease will be in excess of five years, the city has advertised for bids in accordance with Section 15.2-2101 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. The ground lease to be awarded shall be for the purpose of maintaining an existing and occupied corporate airport hangar located on the leased premises and including all permitted uses associated therewith. At this time and for public information, I will read a brief summary of the bid that has been received, after which I will inquire if any further bids are offered. A bid has been received by FLMD Incorporated, who owns the hangar located on the premises to be leased. Having read the bid received in advance, are there any other persons interested in offering a bid at this time? Please understand that any bids submitted during this meeting must comply with the form and requirements of the advertised invitation for bid. I now declare the bidding closed. Mr. Manager, does staff have a recommendation regarding the bid received in advance of this meeting?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Greg Bird, Interim Director of Economic Development, will provide a quick overview plus a recommendation on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, pleasure to see you once again this afternoon. What you have before you, as the mayor has already introduced, I'll summarize what you have on your screen in front of you. Of course, the purpose for this public hearing is essentially to seek the City Council's approval to authorize the City Manager to enter into a ground lease agreement for approximately 0.67 acres located at the Suffolk Executive Airport. It's known as Tax Map Parcel 44*62. As required by Virginia Code 52.230-2101, the city advertised this particular bid for the ground lease for a term not to exceed 30 years for this 0.67 acres, also referred to as the leased premises. And as indicated here, the ground lease will be awarded, once awarded, shall be used for the purpose of maintaining an existing and occupied corporate airport hangar located at the leased premises. The staff recommendation is that, following the public hearing, that City Council will approve an ordinance authorizing the City Manager to enter into a ground lease agreement with the successful bidder for the purpose of maintaining an existing and occupied corporate airport hangar located at the leased premises at the Suffolk Executive Airport. And displayed for you for your review is that particular hangar as well as the land that surrounds it. Following your public hearing, myself as well as City Attorney's Office will be prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bird. Having received staff's recommendation, the City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive public comment on the award of the ground lease to the successful bidder. This public hearing was properly advertised as required by Virginia Code Section 15.2-1813. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? Do we have any speakers? Hearing none. This public hearing is now closed. A motion is in order to award the bid to FLMD Incorporated and to adopt an ordinance authorizing the City Manager to execute a ground lease with FLMD, Inc. as the leasing. It was the pleasure of council. Councilman Fawcett.
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and move on the motion to approve.
Councilman Williams.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Members of council, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next bid opening and public hearing is an ordinance authorizing the City Manager to enter into a ground lease concerning approximately 0.49 acres, more or less, of city property located in the city of Suffolk, Virginia, and also being a part of that property noticed Tax Map Parcel Number 44 Asterix 62 for a term in excess of five years. This agenda item concerns an invitation for bids for a ground lease for a term not to exceed 30 years and comprised of approximately 0.49 acres located in the city of Suffolk and specifically located within the bounds of that certain parcel known as Tax Map Parcel Number 44 Asterix 62. Said parcel being the location of the Suffolk Executive Airport. Because the lease will be in excess of five years, the city has advertised for bids in accordance with Section 15.2-2101 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. The ground lease to be awarded shall be for the purpose of maintaining an existing and occupied corporate airport hangar located on the leased premises and include all permitted uses associated therewith. At this time and for public information, I will read a brief summary of the bid that has been received, after which I will inquire if any further bids are offered. A bid has been received by Bay Avionics Holdings LLC, the contract purchaser of the corporate hangar located on the premises to be leased. Having read the bid received in advance, are there any other persons interested in offering a bid at this time? Please understand that any bids submitted during this meeting must comply with the form and requirements of the advertised invitation for bid. I now declare the bidding closed. Mr. Manager, does staff have a recommendation regarding the bid received in advance of this meeting?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Bird will address the item and also provide a recommendation. Greg.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Once again, members of council, you have a public hearing for a second ground lease located at Tax Map Parcel 44*62. The purpose for this particular public hearing is that the term for this ground lease request will exceed five years. As previously indicated, the, per Virginia Code 1522101, the city advertised the bids for, concerning this ground lease for a term not to exceed 30 years for approximately 0.49 acres referred to here as the leased premises. As the mayor has indicated, the ground lease to be awarded shall be for the purpose of maintaining an existing and occupied corporate airport hangar located at the leased premises and including all permitted uses associated therewith. Our staff recommendation, following your public hearing, will be to recommend that the City Council approve the ordinance authorizing the City Manager to enter into a ground lease agreement with the successful bidder for the purpose of maintaining an existing and occupied corporate airport hangar located at the premises at the Suffolk Executive Airport in Suffolk. Following your public hearing, should you have any questions, myself and council remain present to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bird. Having received the recommendation from staff, City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive public comment on the award of the license to the successful bidder. This public hearing was properly advertised as required by Virginia Code Section 15.2-1813. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? Hearing none. This public hearing is now closed. A motion is in order to award the bid to Bay Avionics Holdings LLC and to adopt an ordinance authorizing the City Manager to execute a ground lease with Bay Avionics Holdings LLC as the leasing. It was the pleasure of council. Councilman Goldberg.
Move for approval, Mayor.
Councilman Williams.
I second that.
We have a first and a second. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Members of council, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, our final bid opening and public hearing is an ordinance authorizing the City Manager into a ground lease concerning approximately 2.25 acres, more or less, of city property located in the city of Suffolk, Virginia, and also being part of that property known as Tax Map Parcel Number 44 Asterix 62 for a term in excess of five years. This agenda item concerns an invitation for bids for a ground lease for a term not to exceed 30 years and comprised of approximately 0.25 acres located in the city of Suffolk and specifically located within the bounds of the certain parcel known as Tax Map Parcel Number 44 Asterix 62. Said parcel being the location of the Suffolk Executive Airport. Because the lease will be in excess of five years, the city has advertised for bids in accordance with Section 15.2-2101 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. The ground lease to be awarded shall be for the purpose of maintaining an existing and occupied corporate airport hangar located on the leased premises and including all permitted uses associated therewith. At this time and for public information, I will read a brief summary of the bid that has been received, after which I will inquire if any further bids are offered. A bid has been received by Hughes R. Dellinger, owner of the corporate hangar located on the premises to be leased. Having read the bid received in advance, are there any other persons interested in offering a bid at this time? Please understand that any bids submitted during this meeting must comply with the form and requirements of the advertised invitation for bid. I now declare the bidding closed. Mr. Manager, does staff have a recommendation regarding the bid received in advance of this meeting?
Yes, again, Mr. Greg Bird will provide the staff report and recommendation.
Thank you once again. And as the mayor's indicated, for your final bid opening and public hearing, once again, we're for you to request council approve an ordinance authorizing the City Manager to enter into a ground lease agreement with the successful bidder for this 0.25 acre bidder for this .25 acre parcel located at the Suffolk Executive Airport. Once again, the bid was advertised per Virginia Code 15.2-2101, and the purpose for the ground lease, just to reiterate, the ground lease is to be awarded, to be awarded shall be for the purpose of maintaining an existing and occupied corporate airport hangar located at the lease premises and including all permitted uses associated therewith. Staff's recommendation, following the public hearing, is that council approve an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into the ground lease agreement with the successful bidder for the purpose of maintaining the existing corporate hangar at the lease premises at Suffolk Executive Airport. Following your public hearing, I remain present, along with council, for any further questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Bird. Having received a recommendation from staff, city council will now hold a public hearing to receive public comment on the award of the license to the successful bidder. This public hearing was properly advertised as required by Virginia Code Section 15.2-1813. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? Hearing none. This public hearing is now closed. A motion is in order to award the bid to Hughes R. Dellinger and to adopt an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a ground lease with Hughes R. Dellinger as the leasee. What is the pleasure of counsel? Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve as written.
And a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Williams?
I second.
And a second. Our Councilman Williams, do we have any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Members of council, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is in ordinance to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the city of Suffolk to change the zoning from B2 General Commercial Zoning District to RU Residential Urban Zoning District for property located at northeast quadrant of the bisection between the Route 58 bypass and Murphy's Mill Road. Zoning Map 25, Parcel 70B, Account Number 253374100, RZN 2021-007, conditional. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the item.
Yes, and our Director of Planning and Community Development, Bob Goomis, will provide the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, good evening. Presented for your consideration is rezoning request RZN 2021-007, conditional, which proposes to rezone 6.9 acres from B2 General Commercial to RU Residential Urban Zoning District in order to construct a 70-unit multifamily condominium project. The property is located adjacent to the Halsted Reserve Development, just inside the Route 58 bypass, and is located within the Central Growth Area Inner Ring Suburban Use District. Access will be from Murphy's Mill Road, to which the developer has proffered to complete the required road improvements as noted in the approved traffic impact study. This includes the dedication of a right turn lane into the property from Murphy's Mill Road. The proposed development will consist of seven buildings with 10 units each and located within each building. This is a general conceptual plan of the project. This plan has not been proffered, however. In addition, specif- the, in addition to specifying the maximum number of units and limiting that to 70, and proffering the construction of the necessary road improvements, the developer has also proffered to advance capacity for 17 elementary students and three high school students this project will generate. These advancement of capacity will be at a cost of $35,112.50 per student for the elementary level and $29,680 per student at the high school level. Accordingly, the proposed project and rezoning is in compliance with the adopted 2035 comprehensive plan and the Unified Development Ordinance. The Planning Commission, by a vote of six to one, has forwarded this request with a recommendation for approval. This is a public hearing, after which I and other staff members are available for questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Goomis. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address in favor of this project?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, my name is Greer Ferguson. I practice law. Ferguson Rolls and Rains located at 332 West Constance Road here in Suffolk. First off, I'd like to say it's really nice to be able to speak without a mask on and be in a public place. It's a pleasure to be here. When you, when you listen to the staff report on this project that we propose to do, it really feels that we, we really fit into all of the boxes that council and the city should be looking for, for growth in this area of town. We back right up to the Halsted, which is a large development which runs all the way from 460 over to Murphy's Mill, and we are essentially filling in a corner that separate, that between the bypass and, and go over to Halsted of about seven acres is what we're doing. We will be putting in proposed 70 units. That would be seven units of 10 people, 10 units each, so it would be 70 new units. The roadways, the traffic engineers have determined are adequate for what we are doing. We would not generate enough new traffic to create any problems. The, we will be putting in a right-hand, dedicated right-hand turn lane for our project. In addition, and so far as the schools that are concerned, we have proffered the additional funds necessary pursuant to staff recommendation, which at this point it appears we would create 20 new students, 17 at the elementary and three at the high school level at this point. We feel that what we are trying to do, and it fits into the, the needs of the, both the comprehensive plan for 2030, 35, as well as the UDO, we are putting this some density to, that is affordable. This is not low housing. It's housing that the average person with, with a husband and wife working could afford to buy, and they could then have their jobs maybe a little closer. And so we're trying to, part of the plan is, and part of the philosophy, is let's get people near where their jobs are instead of driving so far to cut down on the use of automobiles. That's part of the philosophy in these plans, and I, this would accomplish that for bringing workers into the downtown area and the immediate surroundings. We feel that the plan is one that is well thought out. It just blends right in with the Halsted right next door, so it, it really just completes that project, is what it does on a much smaller scale. So we would be most appreciative if you would consider passing and, or passing the application as submitted. If there are any questions, we certainly would be available to answer questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. Are there any other speakers to speak in favor? Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Do we have any speakers to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Mr. Ferguson, would you like a rebuttal?
The only rebuttal I would give is thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Thank you.
Here are no additional speakers. This public hearing is now closed, and ordinance has been presented for council's consideration, and the motion would be in order. What is the pleasure of counsel? We have Councilman Goldberg?
Mayor, I move for approval.
And a motion for approval from Councilman Goldberg. Councilman Williams?
I second that.
And a second from Councilman Williams. Do we have any other comments? Hearing none. Members of council, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is in ordinance to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the city of Suffolk to change the zoning from A Agricultural Zoning District to RLM Residential Low Medium Density Zoning District for property located at 2534 Jackson Road, zoning map 43, Parcels 22 and 21A, Account Numbers 152397000 and 152398000. This is RZN 2021-011. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the item.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Again, Mr. Bob Goomis will give the staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Presented for city council's consideration is rezoning request RZ 2021-011. This is to rezone approximately 8.4 acres from A Agricultural Zoning District to RLM Residential Low Medium Zoning District. The subject property is located on Jackson Road within the Central Growth Area Suburban Use District. With the last comprehensive plan update, the Central Growth Area was expanded to include properties located on the south side, if you will, of Turlington Road. This expansion included this subject property. Furthermore, as you may recall, city council has recently rezoned two adjacent parcels that are a portion of this project. This proposal that is before you this evening is a continuation of this development and represents the third phase, which will, when completed, will consist a total of 70 single-family lots in total. As presented, the proposal does comply with the Unified Development Ordinance, as well as the 2035 comprehensive plan. The Planning Commission, by a vote of seven to zero, forwarded this request for your consideration with a recommendation for approval. Again, this is a public hearing, and staff and I will be available for questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Goomis. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five-minute period for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address. This is to speak in favor.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, my name is Greer Ferguson. Practice law with the law firm of Ferguson, Rolls and Rains at 332 West Constance Road here in the city of Suffolk. I'm speaking on behalf of the applicants tonight. What we're doing here, members, is really just expanding that which has already been approved by this council. Every, all the boxes fit according to the planning commission, excuse me, according to staff. We, this is really just phase three of a development that's already taking place and pretty much almost built out, not completely. We'll be adding about 23 new units off, this will be off of Jackson Road. In order to facilitate access, this new development with the roadway between phase one, two, and three will all tie it together as your flat should have shown, and we will also add a new access on to Jackson Road. So the entire development comprised of about 70 units will, will have access off Turlington Road and two off of Jackson Road. We are inside of, of the, of the growth district as recently defined, and we feel that this is just a natural continuation of what has already been approved by council and pretty much finishes off this development because at this point you would have to go over the line to go any further down Jackson Road. So we feel it's something that is, is just a natural. We would ask that you pass it, and certainly if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them. I did want to add, this particular project would add no new students or no new pressure on the school system. There is adequate schooling at all three levels of schooling in this district to accommodate this, plus any other growth that's on the books. Thank you very much.
We have our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. Do we have any other speakers to speak in favor? If not, do we have any speakers to speak in opposition?
I'm a little new to this. This is my first time being in this situation.
Sir, did you state your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Thomas Cross, and my address is 2562 Jackson Road.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
And I'm part owner of that land, and I decided not to sell any of my land. So my brother and Mr. Bob was in connection. I don't know if my brother told him or not, but I told my, my brother that I didn't want to sell any of my land. It's a little, little low for me. So, you know, I don't know where to go from here. I guess I had to go to planning or something, because when he brought, when we decided to sell him the land, the houses that he built gonna come right by my house, and I'm gonna build a house behind my house, and I'm gonna, I'm not gonna have any way to it. You know, I think the planning, they decide, you know, where you're gonna put your driveway, where you're gonna put your house and all of that. So I'm gonna have to get back with Mr. Bob and see can we, we renegotiate this problem. So, I mean, that's where I'm at. I mean, they know what he know that I first decided that I was gonna take an acre, but when I looked at his plans, and I say, well, if I build a house, I got no way out. So I decided to keep all my land, and so I can have a way that I can build a house and have a way out of my land. You know what I'm saying? I don't think it's right, I don't think it's right that he can come and take my land and not allow me away from my, my, the house I'm getting ready to build. It don't make no sense to me. So, I mean, we'll have to go from there. Like I said, this whole thing was done wrong in my eyesight. So that's where I'm at. I don't want to sell my land, but my brother and sister is welcome to sell theirs. So, like I said, that's where I'm at.
Thank you, sir. We have our next speaker to speak in opposition to this ordinance. Do we have any other speakers to speak in opposition? Hearing none. Mr. Ferguson, would you like to have rebuttal?
I wouldn't call that a total curveball, but I'd been told that that might happen without an opportunity to speak to Mr. Cross just recently, in the last few days. Just so you know, I, I know the Crosses personally. I know their family, and I was unaware that this might be a problem. What we have, and if necessary, maybe we should table so we can talk to the, to Mr. Thomas Cross. But what I have here, just so you can know, so it doesn't sound bad. I don't like my clients being made to feel like they tried to take advantage of someone. being made to feel like they tried to take advantage of someone. Thomas Cross signed a contract for the sale of this property in August of two thousand twenty. He signed the contract. Then he signed the application for the rezoning in March of this year. So he, he played a part in all of these signatures. And then, for reasons that I, I was unaware of until he expressed them before you right there, he no longer wishes to sell now. He probably has a binding contract here. I mean, he signed it, it's in writing. We have rules for written contracts in, in the Commonwealth of Virginia. But we don't want to get into that with Mr. Cross. I would prefer to table this and give us an opportunity to work with Mr. Cross. And if not, we'll just have to let things play out. But I think just to try to jam it either down him or come back at us, one or the other would get spanked tonight. I don't think that would be a good resolution for anyone. So I would, I would ask that the matter be tabled for a month and give us a chance to see where we can go with it. That would be my request. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. An ordinance is presented for council's consideration. We got a lot of lights on. Vice Mayor Bennett.
Thank you, Mayor. And, Mr. Ferguson, and starting at, from the comments, and I agree, and I would like to offer a motion that this be tabled for thirty days to give you all a chance to get back with Mr. Cross and work out your differences and come back to us.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Bennett to table. Councilman Ward.
Oh, yes, I'd like to commend Lawyer Ferguson for doing that by table. And I've never seen it before. I'm, I'm on here, I've never seen that before. And I like the idea of what you said because it did get confusing. And I think that was honorable, what you did. And I thank you very much that we don't have to pull on this, on this dice. Thank you for doing that.
Okay, do we have, we have a first and we have a second by Councilman Ward. Further discussion, Councilman Goldberg.
Was that a second or just a comment? I just didn't hear. Yeah, we, I didn't hear a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Councilman Williams.
I'd like to second that, Mayor.
Okay, we have first and a second. Is there any other discussion of the motion?
I'd like to speak.
Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
I'm trying to get you on. Yeah, we got technical, we got technical difficulty. But that's all right, go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Ferguson, again, for, for doing what you're doing. You, you have assigned that contract. We could go ahead and vote on that tonight and, and get that done. But what you have done is, is certainly very honorable, and I appreciate you doing that. And to coastal development developers, the same thing for them to be able to do this. I do appreciate it, and I support you in what you've asked for. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion of the motion? If not, we have a motion on the floor to table for thirty days, which would be August eighteenth's meeting until August eighteenth. If there's no further discussion, members of council, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is in ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a public assembly not otherwise enumerated on property located at twenty-six-ninety Bridge Road, zoning map five-D, paragraph two-A, parcel A, asterisk two, account number three-zero-four-three-six-nine-one-zero-zero, CUP twenty-twenty-dash-zero-one-five. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the item.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Again, the interim director of planning and development, community development will provide the overview. Bob.
Good evening again. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Presented for your consideration is conditional use permit request, CUP twenty-twenty-dash-zero-one-five. And this is to, a request to establish a public assembly at the Sturvent Funeral Home located on Bridge Road. The property is located within the Northern Growth Area in a ring suburban use district. The proposal is to construct a separate five-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-one-square-foot building at the rear, somewhere located at, at the rear of the property. Now, during the application process and staff's review and then subsequent at the Planning Commission meeting, there was a lot of discussion generated regarding the, principally around the proposed use. As staff worked with the applicant and moved through the review process, the applicant modified their initial request to have this be a separate principal use as an, as a public assembly, to that being a ancillary use associated with the funeral home itself. These decisions, I think, were business decisions based on the, in part, on the improvements that would be required to be constructed. During the Planning Commission application and conversation, the applicant did modify their request to specifically state that rather than this be an ancillary use, they would prefer that it would be a separate principal use and not necessarily have all of the activities that may take place in the, the, in the public assembly building, this new building, not have them directly associated with the activities of the funeral home and associated with funeral activities that were occurring at that time. As such, the Planning Commission and the owner modified their request. And I will note that staff has no objection to the modification. The conversation that was generated at Planning Commission, for example, is the difference between the, the number of improvements that would be required. For example, as an ancillary use that would be associated directly to the, the funeral home activities, this project would require one-hundred-and-nine parking spaces. The existing parking lot has that number. However, they would be losing some once they start constructing the new access and, and all the improvements associated with building this building. And so consequently, that hundred-and-nine spaces would accommodate, with the few additional spaces that they would be able, required to build, would accommodate this use as an ancillary use. However, in comparison, and again noting the desires of the applicant and staff having no objection, with this being a principal use, the total number of parking spaces, for example, would increase to one-hundred-and-fifty-nine required because you, under the Unified Development Ordinance, you would need to be able to accommodate the parking demands for both facilities. Staff has no objection. However, we did note to the applicant that these, and to the Planning Commission, that these are the type of items that we would need to be sure we addressed at, at the time of site plan approval. So having said that, and the Planning Commission, by a vote of six to one, has forwarded this request to City Council with the modification as recommend, with, as requested by the applicant at that meeting, that being that this not be considered an ancillary use but that it be considered a public assembly separate from the funeral home. I would note that because of the process that this application went through, the staff report and the ordinance that is before you is based on the, the understanding that this application was going to be for an ancillary use. So should City Council decide to approve this request as modified and recommended by the Planning Commission, I would just note that the motion to approve would need to include the deletion of conditions number two and number seven in the approving ordinance. And those are the conditions that would limit this activity and treat it as an ancillary use rather than as a, a separate principal use to, to the funeral home. So having said that, staff has no objections. Just wanted to be sure to note that that approval would require the removal of those two conditions from the approving ordinance that's in your package. Mr. Mayor, this is a public hearing. Staff's available for questions, should you have some.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gummis. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a ten-minute period for the proponents, a fifteen-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five-minute period for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address, speaking in favor of this ordinance?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Management, members of the council. My name is William Gardner. I live at three-three-three Thelma Lane in Portsmouth for over forty years. I am the great-grandson of Charles Sternervan, who founded this funeral home back in the eighteen-eighties. It's been managed and run by my family all these years. The proposal we have here is for a reception center. And I know they, they changed the terminology somewhat, but most of the, ninety-five percent of the use of this building is funeral-related. The reason for this building is so that can provide a separate private facility where families can gather after a service, before, or in lieu of a service, and have a meal. Funeral service has changed. Families' needs have changed the last ten years. We're just trying to provide services that families find value in. This facility is not designed to provide rents for the funeral home. Every time we use this facility, particularly when it's a funeral-related, there's never a charge. I don't charge. I'm referring to the, my facility I have in Portsmouth. And it'll be the same way in Suffolk. There's never been a charge. The only charge that the family occurs is by, by the caterer. But I donate that building, and I do not charge for it except on some very unusual situations. But generally, that's the case. We've operated one in Portsmouth for five years. Ninety-five-plus percent is funeral-related. And I know the, the fact that I have a church, they might want to use the building. I might want to provide a breakfast for my Rotary Club one day. If that changes the parking from, from fifty to a hundred-and-fifty, I don't quite understand that. But anyway, if that's the rules, that's the rules. But it's just a little bit bizarre to me that just by being able to offer a facility for the public use and very restricted use, I don't just rent this out to anybody who wants to come in and use the building and have a party. That is not the intent of this building. It's strictly for funeral-related and for the community if, if they would like to use the building for an appropriate event. As I say, we've operated one for five years in Portsmouth. It's been met with great success. That's why I like to do it in Suffolk as well. I'm willing to make a major investment in Suffolk for this facility. In all the five years I've operated one in Portsmouth, I've never had one issue that's come up that reflected poorly on the community or the funeral home. I just think it's a, a good proposal. It's some way I can offer additional services to families that are in a difficult time. And I think it can be an asset to the community as well the way we utilize it when in Portsmouth. I would hope that you look kindly on this and, and realize what it is really intended to be used for. It's not, you know, it's, it's not designed to go out and rent everybody in the public. That is not the purpose of this building. And I just want to be able to offer it in certain circumstances for the, to the community in a very restricted form. I guess that's, my time is up. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you, sir. We have our next speaker, please. Our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. Do we have any other speakers to speak in favor? Hearing none, do we have anyone to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Hearing none, this public hearing is now closed. An ordinance is presented for council's consideration, and a motion would be in order. It's the pleasure of council. Councilman Fawcett.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Mr. Gardner and his family for coming out tonight. I know the Gardeners well from Portsmouth. I lived over there for a number of years, and they do a tremendous service over there on Portson Boulevard. They attained, across the street from them on Portson Boulevard, an old vacant, it was a bank at one time, and they bought that building and turned it into a family facility where families have an opportunity to gather either before or after their ceremony of one of their loved ones. They have been a pillar of the community over there. They have done an excellent job. They are real restrictive on what they allow to be done on their property. They don't allow anything of large parties, Friday night parties, or any of this nature. They are very, very upstanding folks. I had a chance to sit down with the Gardeners when they wanted to put this plan in play. I think it's an excellent, excellent addition to the Sternervan Funeral Home that'll be, that is standing right now on Bridge Road. They, and they have done a wonderful job out there, and they maintain their facility top-notch. And probably, some of us in this room have probably been in their funeral homes from time to time from people that have had, lost a loved one. The parking is really, to me, a very minuscule, not issue. They have a wonderful church relationship right next door to them. The church is willing, and if the Gardeners have to, according to their, to get their plan approved, they could go to the church and get a written affidavit that they could use the parking lot. It would solve their problem, in my opinion. They have a rather large parking facility there now. So, you know, and I think it's an advantage, too, to the community if, if somebody needs a facility to meet in, it's got some capabilities. And they would probably do that provided it met their, their standard. So I, I can't tell you more, of a more opportunity for me to sit here and, and make a motion to approve this, CUP twenty-twenty-one-oh-one-five, with the conditions that have been removed, conditions two and seven. And I would hope that this council would look at this group that would love to continue to do business in our city and would give this family an opportunity to expand and be able to reach out to our folks that are in a dire time of need to be comforted and have a place to meet. It's very difficult to meet in a funeral home when you got a large group of people. You gotta, if they have the ideal idea to move it, it'll be forty-five degrees on most of their building. So it's gonna be in a beautiful, beautiful setting. building, so it's gonna be in a beautiful, beautiful setting. So with that, Mayor, I'm hoping that we can get this approved for the Gardeners tonight.
Making, is that a motion for approval?
I made a motion for approval with, with the conditions removing, uh, condition two and seven.
Two and seven, okay. Councilman Johnson.
And I'm gonna second that, and also thank the Sternervan Funeral Home for the services they provide to our city. We are very appreciative, and we want you to stay on Bridge Road forever. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Fawcett, and a second by Councilman Johnson. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to support the Sternervan Funeral Home. You do wonderful work. I love the project. I think it's a great project. I thank you for your investment in Suffolk and what you're doing, and all for you. I know the church next door is in support, and I'm just proud and thank you for doing what you're doing, and keep it up and do a great job. Thank you very much.
Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, the motion is for approval with the conditions, with condition number two and seven being removed. Council members, please prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record to vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is in ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a solar energy facility on property located at 6245 Holland Road. Zoning map 40 parcel 48, account number 152497000, CUP 2021-009. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the item.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Mr. Bob Goomis again will provide a SAF report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Council members, presented for your consideration is CUP request 2021-009 to establish a four-megawatt solar facility on 21 acres located on Holland Road. The property is located on Holland Road adjacent to the Virginia Tech Research Facility, just outside the limits of the Village of Holland. It is located within the Rural Agricultural Conservation Use District. Access is proposed to be taken via a dedicated easement from the adjacent property, thereby not requiring increasing the number of access points coming out onto Holland Road. The proposal does comply with the 2035 Comprehensive Plan and the Unified Development Ordinance, including the supplemental standards that council has adopted with regards to solar facilities. This includes the requirement for, in this case, a 50-foot buffer along Holland Road. The Planning Commission, by a vote of seven to zero, has forwarded this recommendation for approval. And, Mr. Mayor, this is a public hearing, and staff and I are available for comments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Goomis. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five-minute period for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address, to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, members of the council. My name is Kieran Seau. I'm the Director of Development with Dimension Energy. We're a community developer headquartered out of Atlanta. Our address is 3280 Peachtree Road, Atlanta, Georgia, 30305. And I'm joined tonight by Daniel Langston from Christopher Consulting. Christopher Consulting is our environmental, civil, and landscape architecture consultant on this project. Daniel is available to answer any questions related to civil engineering and landscaping on the project. And I'm here tonight because our company is proposing to develop a 5.2-megawatt DC, 3.75-megawatt AC community solar facility on this parcel on Holland Road. With my 10 minutes, I'll give an overview of Dimension Energy, who we are, what we do, what is community solar, and why is it happening in Virginia now? How is community solar different than utility-scale solar, which the state has seen more of? And then specifically, an overview of our project site, and why we think solar makes sense here. So, just as a quick overview, as I mentioned, Dimension Energy doing business here tonight is Suffolk CSG LLC, is a community solar developer headquartered out of Atlanta. We specifically develop community solar projects. We do no utility-scale solar development. We have a deep bench of experience. Over the past several years, our board and management team have developed and constructed around four gigawatts of solar. Currently, we have around 500 megawatts of projects in our pipeline, not only in Virginia, but in all major markets across the country, and we expect to develop around 800 megawatts of projects over the next four years. So when I make presentations like these, the first question is always, what is community solar? Why is it happening in the state now? And the answer to that is the shared solar law that was passed last year. It was a program that was created subsequent to the Clean Energy Economy Act that was passed earlier in the year, and what it does is it allows residents to enter into a subscriber agreement to receive bill credits, to subscribe to these community solar facilities, to save money monthly on their Dominion electric bill. And the way I like to describe community solar is more similar to residential rooftop solar, because people have seen that, and commercially it operates very similarly. So if you've ever seen solar panels on somebody's roof, it's very unlikely that they have bought those panels outright. More likely what they've done is they've entered into a power purchase agreement with a solar developer who rents out the space on their roof and then sells the power back to them at a discounted rate that they would otherwise pay Dominion for their electricity. So for community solar, what you could picture is an entire neighborhood where every home has solar panels on their roof, and you're aggregating them into one single system. And while electrically, the power goes out to Dominion's grid, it's interconnected to a local distribution line. Commercially, it operates very similarly, where the resident enters into a subscriber agreement with the developer for a share of the solar produced by the system, and they are credited for that power produced at a rate that's less than what they would otherwise pay Dominion. So in short, they would save money month over month on their electric bill. We think this is a great program that creates a benefit for a lot of people, and we think this is advantageous to traditional rooftop solar in a lot of ways, because it is accessible to many more people. For traditional rooftop solar, there are a lot of limiting factors that would disqualify people from receiving the benefit. For example, perhaps they live in an apartment building, or rent their home and don't have access to their roof. Or maybe their roof is too old and can't accommodate solar facilities over the 25-year term. None of this really matters for community solar, because the panels aren't actually on your roof. The biggest limiting factor for a lot of folks is that traditional rooftop PV requires a minimum credit score. And if you don't meet it, you're ineligible to enter into a power purchase agreement. And this isn't the case with community-scale solar. In fact, as part of this program, the state has issued two requirements, that projects be no larger than 5 megawatts AC, so the project we're discussing tonight is slightly below that, and also 30% of offtake be by low-income customers. So we think this is a great benefit to the community, because it allows those who benefit, could benefit most from programs like this, who are otherwise disqualified from traditional options, to receive this benefit. So we think this is a great asset. This project's very different than utility scale, which I'm sure the city's more familiar with. Perhaps there have been other projects proposed to date, and the two key differences are size and offtake. So as I mentioned, offtake for community solar projects, it's entirely by residential customers who are credited for the project. Utility-scale project, typically your offtaker is either Dominion Power directly, who just buys the power at a wholesale rate and then sells it at an upcharge to residential customers, or typically, large anchor commercial customers like a Facebook or a Microsoft, who add during to a power purchase agreement. And we think community solar is advantageous, because if you're going to develop a project in a community, you want the people who live in that community to be eligible to actually receive that benefit. So we think this is a great advantage over utility scale. And the second one is sheer size. So if you've seen many of the utility-scale projects proposed around the state, they could be as large as 20 megawatts, 60 megawatts, 100 megawatts in size. These are big projects, and with a large capacity comes large land requirements. A 100-megawatt project can take up to 450 to 500 acres of land just for area under panel alone, not considering setbacks. Community solar projects, on the other hand, as I mentioned, it's five acre, 5 megawatts AC total, so, you know, 20 times smaller than that 100-megawatt project, and with that, a smaller land footprint. A 25, uh, I'm sorry, a 5-megawatt project typically utilizes around 25 acres of land, so substantially smaller. And that lets us to, allows us to be all more nuanced in how we cite and design projects, to make sure they make sense in the community, and can comply with those local zoning ordinances where we're developing the projects. So the project we're talking about today is located on Holland Road. It's a 25-acre property. As I mentioned, our facility is going to be 3.75-megawatts AC, so substantially smaller than that 5-megawatt maximum. And so our area under panel is around 14 and a quarter acres, so substantially smaller. And there are lots of things that we like about this site. One, it allows us to design the system in a way that utilizes a relatively small amount of area and leaves land around the buffer. That allows us not only to comply with the required setbacks of 50 feet, but in many areas exceed them. So if you look at our site plan from Holland Road, we exceed that 50-foot setback, in fact, to our fence line at 75 feet, and then pass that to, actually, the first panel is around 95. So allows us to design the project to be far away from neighboring properties and parcel boundaries. The site is also flat. It's currently vacant. It is dry. We've done a wetland delineation survey, so we're able to design and operate the system without impact to environmental resources, and it's in a relatively low-dense residential area. The site's zoned agricultural. The few residential neighbors who are in the area are located on the northern side of Holland Road, around 180 feet from our facility, and our facility faces away from them. Our project would be facing due south, and our neighbors to the south are a railroad right-of-way, and then another piece of agricultural land owned by the same landlord who owns our current property. Beyond that, another thing that we like about this project, another thing that we like about community solar over utility scale, is that these projects should be adequately screened to mitigate visual impact. So in compliance with the City of Suffolk Unified Development Code, we have proposed a vegetative buffer around the entire perimeter of the project. I believe on the sides that are not facing Holland Road, around 15 feet in width, and the piece that is facing Holland Road is 50 feet in width. So it's a wide vegetative buffer that'll adequately screen the project from view. The vegetative makeup of that buffer itself is a mix of hardwood, evergreen trees, hardwood trees, evergreen trees, and shrubs, so that provides a height differential to cover the different heights of the vegetative buffer, to adequately screen the project from view. And by utilizing both evergreen and hardwood tree species, we're able to provide full year-round coverage, because the evergreens don't lose their leaves in the winter, and deciduous hardwood trees, which will provide seasonal interest, so it's not just a wall of green. So in summary, we think this is a great program. We think it makes sense for the state under this shared solar program. We think it makes sense for the community at this location, and we think it creates a benefit to individual residents who could subscribe to this project and save money on their monthly electric bill. So with that, happy to answer any questions from this council. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We've got about a minute and 40 seconds. If anybody else would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Would anybody else like to speak in favor? If not, do we have anyone to speak in opposition of this ordinance? Do we have anyone to speak in opposition? Hearing none, sir. Would you have any other comments?
Boy, that we appreciate the council's time and happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you. Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. An ordinance has been presented for council's consideration, and a motion would be in order. Questions or comments? Councilman Johnson.
I'm gonna be a minute. Sir, did you meet with the community? Have you met with the community leaders, or the farmers in the area, or the people that lived across the street?
We have not. So as part of the zoning ordinance, a community meeting was not required. We would have been happy to entertain one. We have coordinated quite a bit with the Virginia Tech Eric, who is immediately our neighbor to the west and south of the property.
Were you aware at one point they wanted to purchase the property?
I was not aware of that, no.
Okay.
But we are actively talking to them to execute this easement, and talking with them about various ways we could partner up on this project.
And that's my other question. Access to the property is going to be through the Virginia Tech property?
That's right. So if you-
You have, you have a signed affidavit from them showing that they'll do that?
No, not yet. So the way this worked is, if you look at the, if we could pull up the site plan again, in our-
We have it.
Okay, great. So in our land use committee meeting, we talked to the folks in the Transportation Department. Thank you very much. And they've always said they would prefer to not have a new curb cut off of Holland Road. There's an existing farm road immediately to the west of our facility that was deeded to Virginia Tech from our property in the past. We have been in touch with Virginia Tech. They are very open into allowing us to use this road. Initially, we planned to enter into a memorandum of, a memorandum of use that we were happy to provide the city. In conversations with the planning department, we were told that they would prefer an easement. That simply takes more time to enter into. However, Virginia Tech has expressed that they'd be happy to enter into one. It just takes time on their end. So in working with the planning department, we agreed that we would present a condition that allows us to present this deed of easement before our final site plan approval.
Are you aware that the farmer to the east is opposed to this project?
I'm not, no.
Okay, extremely. I've been on the phone today with probably 18 different ones that are opposed in that area. I was hoping that you might have met with the farmers in that area to talk with them. One other question, though, when you're gonna, the money's gonna go out to people to improve their bills, their electric bills. How does that happen? How do you pick the people that receive that benefit?
Yeah, that's right. So it's a voluntary program. So anyone who's interested in signing up, they're not mandated to sign up. They're not automatically registered. They can voluntarily subscribe to the program. So once this is developed and built, we go out to the community. We have a variety of advertising, advertising methods. Happy to also partner with the city and any agencies you have to host information sessions, send out mailers, to raise awareness about the project. And then they can contact us and subscribe to the project. The way this program is set up, it's consolidated billing, so Dominion will receive notice that they have subscribed to this project, and that credit will be reflected on their Dominion bill. With respect to the neighboring landowners, you know, I was not aware that this neighbor to the east was opposed to the project. Our real estate team actually has been in touch with them, because at one point we looked at utilizing their property for an easement, because they have a farm road on that side as well. You know, one thing that we think is nice about this project and this type of development, especially in comparison to other types of development, is that it's relatively low-intense land use. There's very little proposed impervious surface on the site, especially compared to other forms of commercial and residential development. The panels themselves are anchored on racking equipment, metal I-beams that are driven into the ground, no concrete footing. We have a very simple gravel access road, and underneath the panels themselves, we maintain native low-growth pollinator species. So essentially, you could think of it as an open meadow with some solar panels inside. And what we think is nice about this kind of development is that at end of life, the project could be decommissioned, which would simply be a matter of removing the solar panels from the racking, pulling up the steel posts, and it's a farm field again. So we think this is a great-
Have you been scouting for a planned place to do this in Suffolk? Were you here looking for this site? Just curious.
Yes. So when the program opened, when we, when a market opens, we have a real estate team that assesses various areas of the market. We look at things like, what kind of sites can have a size that could host a project that we need, what has adequate interconnections. So here, we'd be interconnecting to the Dominion existing distribution line along Holland Road, and what can be compliant with the local zoning code. So when we looked at this, we looked at many sites along this existing distribution line, and we looked and filtered through at which ones meet this criteria, which is how we landed here.
All right, thank you. Thank you. My concern, now my concerns. I'm okay. You can sit down. Thank you. Here's my concerns, guys, and I'm not lying to you when I tell you I've been on the phone. I've been on the phone. Farmers aren't here tonight, but they are riled up. They're very, very distraught. When you drive into the City of Suffolk, you come over the overpass past Holland, you come down to the experiment station, and this is what you're gonna see as you enter our city, is this solar farm on this 26 acres. My concern is not only that, one of my concerns is that our city fathers, our city leaders say that this will not be of, I made my notes, detriment to other landowners. That's not how the landowners feel, though. They feel like putting a solar farm on this farm is gonna take away from their property to the point that it might actually demean it. I guess my real concern with this is, my plan has always been, eventually, we would actually take our comprehensive plan in hand, and we would develop our village centers. My village center is Holland. I want to build a concentric circle around my village center, and I want it developed. I want to get people in there and make something happen. This solar farm sits right inside that. That's not the way you're gonna develop a community is with a solar farm there. I'm not opposed to solar. Don't get me wrong. I think solar is the way of the future. It needs to be on every building in the country. Why we don't have it on every building is amazing to me. But my problem with this is, I don't think it's how we want our city to look. If we vote this project through, and our UDO allows it, the planning did their job in saying that it was approved according to our UDO, it's gonna open up all kinds of issues for us down the road. And this is not the way I think we want 58 to look, and I don't think that it really fits in with what our 2035 plan is asking for as far as the way we're gonna develop. We haven't done it yet, so we don't have anything to base it on, but I'm concerned that this is gonna be a real problem. My other concerns, my concerns with solar farms to start with, I might as well get it all on the table, because I'm gonna be hard-pressed to approve any of them for a while. You look at in the western part of our country right now, we're going through a drought, a huge drought. This has nothing to do with us right now, but you look down the road, these 26-acre farms might be what we all need to eat on in the future, because we are going into a global drought, and parts of our country are in real trouble. So I know, we are on the other side of farming right now with our small farms. People are thinking, well, we gotta do something. We can't make it, this, 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 this. I don't, I don't agree with that. I think our farms are our future. I think our farms are our future, and I think, I think we would be remiss as a council if we didn't look at this and say, is this what we want our city to look like? And I'm telling you, guys, this is just the beginning. This is, we've got to address this, because it's gonna keep on coming. The landowner's not here. The landowner's not living in this market, correct? I mean, he's, he's not. I know he's not. He's living down in Florida, which I wish I could with him sometimes. But my point being, we're the ones that are gonna have to be responsible for this. We've allowed one solar farm over in 460 that has been a disaster. As far as maintenance and as far as the people over there, it's not doing what they told us they were gonna do. I hate to say it, and I'm not, you guys are probably gonna do a really good job, but when you start to build these buffers, if we're not gonna go in and build these buffers two years ahead of the solar farm coming in there, it's gonna be a mess. Go look at all these businesses that we require to plant. They plant at the wrong time of the year. They plant anything to get it past planting, and then the plants die, and then we don't go back and do anything about it. I'm just telling you, this has, I have a real problem with this farm being the first thing we come on. If any of you drive out my way, come out there and look. It's the gas station right up in Holland. This is the whole field right behind that gas station, right on 58. At some point, we're gonna have to develop 58. It's gonna have to be widened, and this, this farm's gonna be sitting there. Hopefully, there's enough setback that it wouldn't happen. But I have a hard time approving it, and I have a hard time going back to my people. Now, farmers have rights, no question about it. They have land rights, but they also have the right to be a good neighbor to the people around them. And I can assure you, I wouldn't say it if I didn't know it, that the people around this farm, Virginia Tech is a good neighbor. You know what Virginia Tech's gonna do? They're not gonna say anything. They represent the state. They represent a lot of good things, and solar power is good. But they, they're not gonna say anything, because they, they can't say anything, because they, they wanna see solar move forward. But I think there's other ways for it to move forward than to take our valuable farmland and turn it into solar. I just don't think. And the other thing, and I get it out, how do you do it with the numbers? How do you make these farms profitable if you're paying them $1,000 an acre? It doesn't make any sense. I can't make the numbers work. Go ahead. You can answer that one if you don't mind, please.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm happy to respond to all of it. So, you know, we, we feel that solar is a great partner with agriculture. In fact, the majority of solar that's built are built on farmland. As I mentioned, the substrate underneath the panels are maintained native low-growth pollinator species. It's not new impervious surface. If you were to develop this as a commercial structure with concrete and rebar, that's land, that's farmland you lose forever. This land is one that's maintained. We think of this solar project as a time capsule for farmland, because it utilizes the existing land, uses the existing landscape, the existing topography. There's no major earth disturbance, very limited impervious surface. The native pollinator species will serve to benefit the neighboring farm by attracting pollinators into the area, and then once it's gone, once the site's decommissioned, it's farmland again. You know, in our conversations with Virginia Tech, you know, even during solar operation, there are ways that could be utilized, this facility, in partnership with agriculture. And those are the things we're exploring with Virginia Tech. Something that's very common on solar projects like these is instead of just doing traditional mowing for vegetative management, doing things like agri-bolt takes, bringing in, you know, herds of sheep to graze the land. So there are certainly ways directly during the operation of the project that can benefit farmers. You know, from a development standpoint, you know, we understand that, you know, the area may want to develop the, you know, the future areas outside of this, this village area. Again, this is a relatively short lifespan. The community solar program is 25 years. A solar project for its equipment, total lifespan is around 35 years, and then those are removed, and it's farmland again that could be developed. From a viewshed standpoint, the way we've designed the system, we've enclosed the entire property around the facility with existing screening. Daniel can answer any questions about how planting would be approached, how those plantings would be maintained to ensure that survivorship. And the, the facility itself is rather short in stature, so we don't think it'll be impacted viewshed for, for neighboring properties.
All right, thank you. That, we're supposed to be talking now, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
That's good, though, but thank you. And I'm gonna finish up. My real problem with the project is, as he said, maintenance, you're gonna put sheep out there and maintain it? I don't think so. Maintenance is a real issue for these projects. You're not gonna be here maintaining it. Our people are gonna be here maintaining it, and we're gonna be viewing it. No, sir, I'm sorry. It's my turn. I, I just have a real problem with this going forward, and I know that, I think down the road, this is gonna happen. But I, like I said last time, we are not ready for this. We are not ready for this. We're not prepared to take it on, and I think if we allow it at this juncture, it's a mistake. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
So Councilman Goldberg, did you want to speak? We had a technical problems there. Got a light but no name, but I think it's you. Okay, I'll turn, I'll get you on there. There you go.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, so I guess we're gonna stop all solar business from coming to the city. I have, I have, I have an issue, I have an issue with that.
That's right. Councilman Goldberg, you have the floor.
That's what I heard. I'm sorry, that's what I heard.
So you have the floor, Mr. Goldberg.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I find that the project is a, a good project. I've looked at it. I went up to the site, saw the site, the property owner's selling. It's a situation which I am in full support of. So let's get it on the table, and I'm gonna move for approval, Mayor.
Okay, a motion for approval from Councilman Goldberg. Do we have any other comments? Councilman Fawcett?
I, I just want to put a little lip service to it, since everybody else is a little bit. Mr. Gumas, can you come on up for a second? Just want to drill this thing in a little more. Just, just a couple of questions. We keep kicking this can down the road here. This is the second or third solar farm we've had come before us, and we just never really got to where we're going, because, one, it don't look good, two, the vegetation's not correct, three, the screening's not right, four, it's too close to the road. We all know renewable energy is coming. I mean, it's been coming. It's everywhere. I guess maybe everybody's shopping the Suffolk, because we have such a great enriched amount of land to put a solar farm. My question is, is we've talked about this in a previous meeting, if I'm not mistaken, when we talked about a solar farm, about the screening vegetation and how the planning department was going to beef up that particular portion of what they're trying to do here. What the gentleman's explained, is this something that we're close to achieving within your department to get something on the table to help these, help clarify some of these issues that we're having with this?
Well, I, I don't have the exact date, but earlier, probably back in the fall of last year, this council adopted amendments to the standards associated with solar farms, increasing the screening requirements, both in number, size, mixture of deciduous and evergreen plants and so forth, in an attempt to, to address the particular issue with regards to the vegetative screening. Yes, sir.
So what you've heard tonight so far, I'm not gonna put you on the spot here, tell me, but do you feel like the presentation achieves where we're trying to go here?
Well, again, and, and we've had this conversation with regards to various aspects of this size scale versus a large scale. We have acknowledged that, you know, this is the beginning that of our experience with them, and that I think we've all acknowledged that our comprehensive plan is currently silent, as well as the Unified Development Ordinance with regards to some of the standards you might want to establish with regards to locational criteria and the like. This does require a conditional use permit. It's, it's, you know, it's not a by-right development, so conditional use permits recognize that a particular use may or may not be appropriate in a particular location where that type of use could be allowed. So we've acknowledged, and I think this council has, and we're gonna further that exploration as we move forward through with the comprehensive plan update.
I mean, one of, one of the two things has to happen here, and I, and I know this is going in the wrong direction. Either we're gonna hold anybody from coming here and applying, asking for a CUP to do this, or we're gonna have to fix what we gotta fix all the way around, because they come in, they spend money, the application fees and smittle fees and all this stuff, and then we get in front of council, and we beat this thing down like a dog. And it's just getting tiring, because we've got to have renewable energy, and we're gonna have it, and it's gonna be coming to most neighborhoods that can pretty much do it. Now, I take exception to the fact that the farmland, hey, the farm is owned by somebody that has the right to lease the land to a potential business option. So how do you tell the guy that is coming to rent his land, oh, well, the rest of the farmers don't want it, and, but, you know, we can't do that? Because now you're telling him, you're boxing him in, him or her, whoever it might be, they can't lease their land. It's, it's crazy. I know we had some issues with the last solar farm, with the vegetation. We all agreed on that. This is an opportunity, if this one comes, to certainly improve when it comes through the engineering process, application stage, you, you know, we can improve on those things if it's possible. But anyway, I appreciate the comment on what you said.
And, and to follow up, again, you know, this is the first step in their application, presuming it, it moves forward with approval for approval of the conditional use permit. They would be required to submit a site plan to be evaluated based on all the criteria that we have in the Unified Development Ordinance with regards to all the site plan requirements, landscaping, screening, stormwater, access and the like.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gumas. I do have a question for the applicant, though. I'm just curious, you made a few body motions about, when it was raised, about how it's gonna be maintained as far as the vegetation goes. You talked about under the solar panels. So who's gonna be there, and what is your schedule for that kind of an issue here, so that everybody gets a warm and fuzzy about how the maintenance is gonna work?
Sure, absolutely. And, you know, first, I just want to say I appreciate the feedback. You know, I understand that there may have been other projects in the county, in the city that have been approved, and perhaps construction was not executed well, perhaps operations not executed well. I would just like to raise that, you know, I think that is an issue with that particular developer and not the technology or development itself. And certainly, you know, these concerns can be mitigated through conditions that are posed on the project at site plan. With regard to vegetation management, we would have both asset managers and operation and, operation and maintenance consultants that are responsible for both the vegetation management on site, making sure the site is clean, the vegetation is maintained, any, you know, areas, trees within the vegetative buffer that are, you know, not healthy are replaced, to make sure that the site is kept, you know, in proper working order.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and second Don's motion, Don Goldberg's motion to approve.
Okay, at this time, we have a councilperson, Butler Barlow, comment first.
I, I just wanted to say that I concur with Councilmember Johnson. I think that the city is not ready to address the onslaught of applications for solar facilities that we're getting. I think we need a better plan in place. I'm, I'm not saying that we're not gonna have solar. I, I just don't think we're quite ready. I think we need to make some updates to the ordinances so that we know exactly, so that we have a plan for how we're gonna implement this, so that we have clearly defined definitions of, and I know we have some in the ordinances, but I, I think we need a better plan to address this, because as Councilmember Fawcett said, renewable energy is coming, but we, we need to be ready for it. We need to make sure that we're implementing it responsibly. One of the problems that I have, and everybody with the solar companies that I've talked to, has said, you know, at the end of the contract period, we're gonna decommission it, we're gonna take everything away, and it's just gonna be a farm again. And I, no one's done that. No one has done that. We don't have any history. We don't have any understanding of if that really will happen. I have seen sites that have, that have been changed and will not be farms again, even when they are decommissioned. So I have some concerns over the life of the projects and the end life of the projects, and this idea that they can just automatically convert back to farmland. So again, just, well, and, you know, I have a lot of other questions, too, but I think the, my, the biggest point for me is that we need to have a clear outlined plan for accepting solar projects coming into the City of Suffolk. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Councilman Ward.
Bob, come up, please. Do we got, do you think we're gonna get a, a number, we're gonna cut off the solar farms in the City of Suffolk? Is there gonna be a number?
A, a number-
How many we gonna allow to be in the City of Suffolk?
That will be-
I mean, is it, is it wide open for solo people to come in and just build solar farms? Just from action?
Well, currently, they are permitted with a conditional use permit in the agricultural and the M2 zoning district. Again, that requires a conditional use permit. We do not have standards with regards to perhaps locational criteria, balancing with the need for other forms of energy, land uses, and so forth. We don't have a limitation on the number of, of any land use, as far as I'm aware, whether it be a solar farm, a industry, or single-family home.
Our comprehensive plan, how many solar farms we, I mean, that's in there, how many farms approximately we looking to have?
We don't have an estimate on, on that type of, of number. It is generated by the demand for, for this type of development.
So we know it's coming, right? It's coming, right? So we don't have no plan for it?
Mr. Manager, if you could help answer that question, please.
Yeah, Councilman Ward, as Bob says, it's, is allowed by CUP in the Ag District. So it's dependent on how many applications we receive. Now, yeah, there's not a specific number that we can say we're gonna have 10, or 15, or 20. It's gonna be how we, what we see coming, and if they meet the criteria, what we have in place today, then it will come forth to planning commission and also to council for consideration. Now, as part of the comp plan, obviously, I've heard the message loud and clear around the dais here, is that we need to come up with criterias that council feels favorable with as part of our comp plan, so we can guide our growth of our city as it relates to solar farms.
That's what I want to hear. I mean, that's all I was asking. We're gonna sit down, because it seem like this, this subject comes up, and we just as far away from knowing what's going on all the time. I mean, we so different, we have a solar farm here, we gonna make money here. I mean, I'm just saying, you know, where, where you want the city to go? Do we wanna be known for the solar farms? I mean, what we wanna do? Let's all get on board, say what we, we known for. Because you, you, you know, I asked you a question about how many you think-
Well, well, again-
Last time, we'd have about five or six solar farms probably came up here.
Well, well, again, the, we have a number of applications that have come through previously.
You're right.
We have not recommended approval of every application, but as, as I've previously noted, and as the manager noted, you know, we do need to establish not only standards, but what the, the vision the city has for this type of use and their location, and that is done through the comprehensive plan, to establish the policies so that the, if there's a need for additional regulations governing their, their construction, their appearance, their location, taking into account, you know, the, the neat, the type of land that they might need, the availability and the need for accessing the energy grid, a variety of, of aspects. the availability, and the need for accessing the energy grid, a variety of aspects. How does it balance with the agricultural community? How do those needs balance with other needs and desires that the city and the community have?
So you saying that we have authority to almost pick where we want the solar farm to be at approximately, where we think this should be the best for the city of Suffolk?
I'm not in a position to say whether we should preclude them or not. That is a decision for this body, but nevertheless, I think there's the, you know, there is a need, the state of Virginia is encouraging the development of alternative form of energies. So we do need to be on the forefront of these type of requests.
I understand what you're saying. When I said "we," I am talking about the city, and we're talking about the council who make the decisions. When I say "we," and exactly what you said, I didn't say "you," I'm saying "we" make the decisions, we have to vote. That's what I'm saying.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Maybe I don't say it right, but that's what I'm saying. I'm trying to get it out of you, sort of, me trying to figure out what you got, what's going on. All right, thank you.
Councilman Johnson.
And I want, Councilman Ward, thank you. What you have just said is my very point. I am not opposed to solar farms. I'm opposed to us going forward right now with these things when we're not prepared as a council. We have not put the rules in effect. This 26-acre farm, if it was sitting back on Leathwood Road, or back on Long Street Lane, or somewhere where you weren't gonna see it, I probably wouldn't have said any of this. This farm is gonna be sitting on my main highway, right as you enter the city of Suffolk. It's gonna be the first thing you see when you come into the city of Suffolk. And I guess that's fine, but I want the first thing you see when you come into the city of Suffolk is a field of corn, or something that's more to what I want it. And this is selfish, but it's what I want. And all I'm asking is that we put plans in place, that we direct these people so they don't waste their money, and tell them where we want the solar farms. How about a solar farm on every rooftop, or solar panels on every rooftop? Maybe we could tidewater builders, we could work on. What I'm saying, though, is there's other ways we could do this without destroying our landscape. I'm sorry, I'll stop.
Councilman Williams.
Yes. Mr. Gumas, can you come up? I have a question.
Yes, sir.
My question is, this is a conditional use permit, correct?
Correct.
If the applicant does not abide by the conditions, can the city pull their license?
Yes, sir. This body has the authority to revoke a conditional use permit through a process if they fail to abide by the conditions that are established.
So we have a way of policing or making sure that they abide by the conditions set forth in the UDL, or they are set forth in the conditional use permit?
Yes, sir, and the-
And this body can-
Established in the conditional use-
At any moment, say, you know, "You guys come back to us and report to us that they're not abiding by the conditional use, and we can pull their license."
Yes, sir. I'll leave it to the city attorney to go into the details of the process, but in essence, that this council does have that authority.
Thank you.
Okay, with Councilman Fawcett, your second shot.
Just one, two things. Number one, most of these companies that put these solar farms in do find, try to find localities and locations that they can make the connection to the Dominion system. You can't have it three miles off the road if there's no trucking line that Dominion has to be able to put this solar system in. Gotta have a way to connect it somewhere, or you're just putting the solar system in. Now, with, Mr. Johnson said, would it be appropriate for us to look at putting a moratorium on any applicants that have come into Suffolk to do a solar farm until such time as we have ironed out some of the questions that have come up on this dais? So that we're not sitting here for an hour every night, we come here and meet, and we get an average of every other meeting we've had solar farm applicants. We just had one not long ago we didn't approve. So, my question to the city attorney is, is can we, and do we have the ability to put a moratorium on, by this council, until such time is planning can develop and bring back to us through the method, to the council, through the planning department, Planning Commission, an appropriate measure that we can look at, so we don't sit here and do this. They either meet the requirement when they come all the way, or they don't meet it. So, do we have the ability to moratorium this, to put it on a back burner until such time that we won't accept any other applicants until we work out the details of this particular issue?
No, you can't put a moratorium on this because this is a zoning ordinance. So, it would have to go through the process for amending the zoning ordinance. The only way you could quote-unquote "put a moratorium" is to have the Planning Commission start the process to remove this from the approved uses chart. So, on our zoning ordinance, you can't do something unless it's in the list of things that we allow. So you would have to have an amendment to the zoning ordinance that pulled this out as an approved use, and then you could go forward and make your amendments. But there is no, there's no method under the Code of Virginia for you to take a piece of the zoning ordinance and put a moratorium on it.
So, the sad part about this is we're gonna hear this every time someone applies, and it gets through the planning department, and it gets to us, until we get this thing on the table of some sort to be able to fix the issues.
Yes, sir, you can't stop it.
Yeah, okay. I think I'm done. Call for the question.
Councilman Goldberg.
Mayor?
Turn your-
Do we not, Mr. Gumas, could you come up one more time? Thank you, Mr. Gumas, one more time, I'll be brief. Do we not have criteria that we use on these facilities of setbacks and vegetation and things of that nature already? Don't we already have that in-
Yes, sir, there are development standards.
There are standards that we have to meet. We've already got that, that's in the, in the system. If we wanna change them, maybe we can change them, but are we gonna hold everyone that comes to us hostage? Thank you, Mr. Gumas. Hold us all hostage to this? I'm sorry, I just feel like we need to move forward, and I do call for the question, Mayor.
Okay, if there are no other comments, I've been sitting back listening to all the comments. That's one bad thing about being up here in the middle, I don't get to speak to the end, but in a way, it's good, 'cause I get to listen to what everybody has to say. The reality of it is, solar panels and this type of energy is coming forward, and there is gonna be a proliferate, proliferation of it with the incentives that the government is providing. It is clean energy, it does serve a purpose. With the research that I've done on solar farms, not all solar farms are created the same. They have dependent, it's all based on their size, whether they're connected directly to grids or not, whether they have equipment that makes noise, or whether it doesn't. So, we've established certain criteria. To Councilman Johnson's point, to Councilperson Butler Barlow's point, we still have some work to do. It's still gonna be a conditional use permit. A conditional use permit is not a slam dunk, period. You can't check off all the blocks. You check off all the blocks, and you come before the planning department, then you come before us, and we decide whether we want it, it's appropriate or not. A conditional use permit is, is that activity, is that business appropriate at this particular, in this particular area? So it may be okay on this block, but three blocks down the road, it's not okay. So we're gonna have to contend with some of these decisions. I was gonna ask Mr. Gumas about the bonding process, if I could just find this, 'cause to Councilman Johnson's point, and unfortunately, a lot of, a lot of discussion we have about solar farms all goes around Route 460, which is probably not the best example in the world. But we have had solar farms that we approved, just nothing to it. You know, we had the big one out in Whaleyville, Billy, I can't remember his last name, you know, we approved that, that was a big solar farm. And then we just had one that was close to a residential area, that had issues with the church, had issue with the residents, and that one was defeated by unanimous decision. And we had a unanimous decision on some that we've approved. So, if we're, if they are in, if solar farms are within our zoning regulations, which are either allowed by right, or permitted by right, require a conditional use permit, or not allowed at all, then we just can't say we're not gonna consider what we have in our charge to be considered with a conditional use permit. So, to Councilman Johnson's point, and I agree, the screening issue and the buffering issue is huge. Do the developments, I know everybody posts a bond at some point, and as far as decommissioning is concerned, I heard about decommissioning, it is in the code, and when it's decommissioned, is the decommissioning bonded? And for what period of time are the developers bonded for the screening and vegetation that they would be required to do at the time of the project? And my point to that is, normally, when everything's done, the bond's released. Is it possible, and this may be a question for the city attorney, when it comes to screening and vegetation, if the bond can be extended out two or three years? And if they can be, then that gives it enough time for that vegetation to root and grow, and for the developer to come back and replace the trees that have died. And if you look into one on 460, it's gonna be hard to get a lot of things to grow there unless you find something that grows in the Amazon, 'cause there's a lot of water in there, around the edges of it. So, is it possible, or what is the bonding process now as far as time for decommissioning, and also for the vegetation part?
All right. Couple of questions. Decommissioning, as a part of the site plan review, and of course, during the conditional use permit, they do submit a draft decommissioning plan that's reviewed and acknowledged whether it satisfies the requirements. But as part of the approval for site plan approval, so that land disturbing and construction can actually take place, the decommissioning plan needs to be approved, a surety will need to be posted that is at the value that comes in based on an engineer's estimate. The state of Virginia allows communities to take into account the recycling of materials, but we're not required, the city of Suffolk does not account or credit the applicant for the ability to get some type of financial cash back during the decommissioning from recycling. So, the value of the, of the-
Decommission-
-surety is based on an approved engineer's estimate, based on the construction costs and inflation factors and those type of things, and it is bonded, or surety is posted for the life of the project-
Okay.
-in the event that the city has to come in and, you know, decommission the project should, should it fail, and the applicant walk away, or whatever they-
Okay, so that, in essence, satisfies the decommissioning concern. I didn't know about the surety bond, but if it stays in there for the life of the project, then if they happen to go out of business, or they close up early, they don't satisfy their responsibilities, then we can make claim on the bond, the city does, and gets reimbursed.
Correct.
Now, how about as far as vegetation and buffering, is there any extended bond period on that?
We treat these just as we would any other development, industrial development or the like, is that the land, the required landscaping is bonded for a period of one year, after which time, if there are deficiencies, they need to be corrected, and then that bond would be released.
Well, my question would be, since the buffering and screening is always critical, every one of these discussions we've had, it's one of the primary concerns. What is this thing gonna look like when you come into our city? What's this gonna look like for the neighbors? So, is it, what would it take to make an amendment that would extend the surety bond on the screening and vegetation for, say, a time of five years? So that way, that there's plenty of time for it to be established in the event that the contractor is not responsive in replacing that vegetation, that we can do it for him and make a claim. So what would be, would we have to go back to the Planning Commission to do that, to add that additional time? Mr. City Attorney, if I could ask you?
Look, if the one-year bond is by code, yes, it has to be, the code has to be changed. The bonding company is not going to, generally, what's written in the surety bond is they will pay it out based on whatever's in our code, or what's in the development agreement. So, once both of those expire, then the bond period, one-year period starts, and so they're not going to pay out anything above that. We've had that before on subdivision projects, you know, when we've had the economic slowdown, and subdivision projects extended out a long time. We end up in arguments with bonding companies about how long they're gonna stay on the hook for, because they're not used to staying on the hook for more than a year. So that is going to be a difficult change.
Is it feasible to put it in the code, just as far as vegetation's concerned, whether it would be a five-year bond required?
I would have to do more research on that to see-
If you could check it, I think it's one of the things, because this is unique. I know normal bonds, it's usually, once you're done, you're done, and, you know, and it's a year. But in this particular case, and this is part of the learning curve, I think, that we're on as far as these solar farms are concerned. As far as this particular project is concerned, I mean, looking at the ones that we've approved unanimously, and looking at ones that we've denied unanimously, I mean, this body has been capable of figuring it out, for the most part. I think this particular project, in my opinion, is not bad. It's a smaller project, it's being screened all the way around, and with the experience that we have, I think staff, as we experience more of these, is more experienced in knowing what to look for, and we can make some more of these changes along the line. So, that's pretty much where I am on it. I don't wanna send the wrong message either, where we have guidelines, and either developers or anyone comes into our city, and they dot the i's, they cross the t's, everything, the staff comes with a staff approval, it comes with a Planning Commission approval, and for some reason, it doesn't happen, unless there's just an overwhelming reason for it not to happen. Councilman Ward.
Yeah, ma'am. Sorry, I just wanna, I wanna thank you for, I forgot, for reminding something to me. What you said, we did vote for a solar farm, and we didn't vote for a solar farm because of the audience that was here. Am I right?
Mm-hmm. One reason.
Councilman Johnson asked the young man, did he go to the community? His answer was no. Councilman Johnson also said that the farmers are not for it. Now, okay, the farmers, now, that's the councilman. He know what his borough or his area want. Now, you know me, if you don't go to the community and ask the community what they want, I have a problem. I don't care how small it is, or whatever, how good presentation is, the community, I like them go to the community and relate to the community. So with that, I can't vote for that.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, we have a motion on the floor for approval from Councilman Goldberg, and we have a second from Councilman Fawcett to approve the ordinance as presented. With that being said, council members, prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clark, please record to vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of five to three, with Councilmember Butler Barlow, Councilmember Johnson, and Councilmember Ward voting in opposition.
Okay, at this time, I've been encouraged to take a 10-minute break, so we're gonna have to take a 10-minute recess, which will put us back here about 10 minutes to nine.
Division Street, zoning map thirty-five F parcels L A asterisk twenty-two B, L A asterisk twenty-two C, and L A asterisk twenty-two D. Account numbers five-one-seven-eight-eight-zero-zero-zero, zero-five-zero-six-six-nine-zero-zero, and zero-five-zero-six-six-eight-zero-zero-zero, CUP twenty-twenty-one-dash-twelve. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the item.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, again, Mr. Bob Gumas, interim director of Planning and Community Development Services will give the report. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Council members, presented for your consideration is CUP twenty-twenty-one-dash-zero-twelve to expand the existing Crocker Funeral Home located at one-oh-eighth North Division The property is located within the Central Growth Area, the Core Support Use District. This same request was previously approved by the City Council back in two thousand and seventeen. Unfortunately, the expansion of the funeral home that was approved at that time did not occur within the required two-year period for its establishment. And consequently, the applicant needs to come back and reapply for this conditional use permit. After the two-year period, and without it being established and the expansion occurring, the conditional use permit became null and void. As proposed, the applicant is proposing to construct a four-thousand-two-hundred-and-eighty-two square foot expansion to the existing building, as well as an additional twenty-five parking The request does comply with the standards of the Unified Development Ordinance and the Comprehensive Plan. And as I said, this is a consideration of a conditional use permit that council previously approved. The Planning Commission, by a vote of seven to zero, has forwarded this request with a recommendation for approval. This is a public hearing. Mr. Mayor and staff and I are available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gumas. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing. Each speaker is asked to provide their name and address. We will have a ten-minute period for the proponents, a fifteen-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for...
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Nathan Lay, Orbis Landscape Architect, three-ten Chandler Harper Drive, Portsmouth, Virginia. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. Thank you for having us here tonight. Landscape architect, practicing Greater Hampton Roads area. Here as a representative of Crocker Funeral Home. It's fun coming to Suffolk. I always seem to get my money's worth. I haven't been here since we were here in two thousand and eighteen. So, thank you. This project, when we did this before, the zoning did not even allow for a funeral home. We were in a unique situation where Funeral Home had been in existence in this location for more than eighty years, or, excuse me, for more than about thirty years. Funeral Home has been in operation in the city in Suffolk for over a hundred years. These gentlemen, the team that owns the facility, have been seeking to expand, to stay competitive, to meet, to modernize, to really just update what was there. It's old, it's small. This allows them to pretty much double the size of their facility. They'll be upgrading the site. There's just a gravel lot there now, so we'll have stormwater management, we'll have the appropriate infrastructure being added. When we came through last time, we had great help from Mr. Gumas's staff, and this time around, it was the same thing as well. So, I'll stand by for questions, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker to speak in favor. Do we have any other speakers to speak in favor of this ordinance? Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Do we have anyone to speak in opposition? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. An ordinance has been presented for council's consideration. Questions, comments, or a motion would be in order. Vice Bennett, Mayor Bennett.
I move the approval of the ordinance.
Got a motion for approval from Vice Mayor Bennett, Councilmember Williams.
I second that.
A second from Councilman Williams. Any further discussion? Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you, Mayor. I support this. I've known the company for many years, going back to when I was a child, actually, here in their wonderful, wonderful group, and I support them wholly, and I wanted to make that statement. Thank you very much.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance to grant a variance to the street improvement standards of section thirty-one dash six-twelve of the Unified Development Ordinance in order to grant relief from connectivity and secondary access minimum requirements on property located at twenty-nine ninety-nine Corporate Lane, twenty-nine twenty-two Godwin Boulevard, and twenty-nine twenty Godwin Boulevard. Zoning map twenty-six, parcels three asterisk one, three asterisk two, and three asterisk three. Account numbers two-five-three-three-four-nine-zero-zero-zero, two-five-three-three-four-eight-eight-zero-zero, two-five-three-three-four-eight-nine-zero-zero, S B V twenty-twenty-one-dash-zero-zero-two. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the item.
Yes, Mr. Gumas will also provide the overview of this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Presented for council's consideration is subdivision variance S B V twenty-twenty-one-dash-zero-zero-two, pertaining to a request for relief from the secondary access standards and the connectivity standards of section thirty-one six-twelve F of the Unified Development Ordinance, specifically pertaining to the Phase One of the Godwin Park mixed-use development. The subject property is located within the Central Growth Area, suburban use district. Phase One, as approved by this body, consists of one-hundred-and-eighty single-family residential units, two-hundred-and-sixty multifamily units, and eighty-five-thousand square feet of commercial space, as well as twenty-four-thousand square feet of office space. The granting of a variance is evaluated on a case-by-case basis, with the principal consideration being focused on a hardship that was created by the physical constraints and circumstances of the property itself, and that are placed on the property, and that are not self-created. The staff has evaluated the request and has concluded that granting the variance is justified, noting some of the criteria and the constraints of this property. You'll notice that, again, Phase, excuse me, Phase One is what is being identified in this area. The remainder of Phase Two, when it's eventually developed, will consist of this project. So, currently, their access into the project is by this single public road. They can propose to continue the public road along those lines, and then down, ending in a cul-de-sac at this location, where this area would be developed with single-family homes on individual lots. We would have a age-restricted condo development here, and then some multifamily units here. Now, the developer has proposed and will be providing secondary access along this corridor, as well as this, for emergency access. These are not public roads, however, and do not comply with the criteria of the public road section. So, when evaluating this application, looking at, one, the shape of the property, surrounded by water, surrounded by adjacent development, that in this particular case, there was no stub street and no ability to make a stub street to the adjacent development to the north. Similarly, there is no opportunity to provide a secondary access out to Godwin Boulevard along this corridor, in that we have developed individual parcels here that do not permit a secondary access being established there as a public road. So, in evaluating this application, we feel that it does meet the criteria for the variance based on the physical constraints of the property itself. The Planning Commission, at their last, at the meeting in July, excuse me, in June, by a vote of seven to zero, have forwarded this application with a recommendation for approval. And, Mr. Mayor, this is a public hearing, after which staff and I are available.
Thank you, Mr. Gumas. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a ten-minute period for the proponents, a fifteen-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Good evening, Mayor Doeman, Vice Mayor Bennett, Members of City Council, City Manager Moore. My name is Tuck Bowie. I'm with the Terry Peterson Companies. We are the applicant for this variance request. My business address is forty-seven oh-five Columbus Street, Virginia Beach. First, let me thank Mr. Gumas for his project overview. I'm not going to waste your time. I think he did an outstanding job. As you all recall, you approved this project, which we call Godwin Park, in December of two thousand and twenty for a mixed-use development, and that, as you're aware, was a very complicated rezoning. From the date we filed it to the date you all approved it, was almost two years to get through that process. A lot of questions that were raised, and we were aware at the time, because of the physical constraint and topographic features of this property, that we were probably going to need to request these variances. We didn't at that time, because we wanted to get through the rezoning, get that approved, and then we wanted to work with staff to make sure we knew what the parameters were, and that's what's brought us here tonight. So, I would ask that it comes before you with the support of staff, including your fire department. We had to work with them to work out these emergency accesses. It comes to you with the unanimous approval of Planning Commission, and I'm hoping that you all will agree with those recommendations and approve it tonight, and I'll stand by to answer any questions you have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Bowie. Next speaker, please. Do we have any other speakers to speak in favor of this ordinance? Do we have anyone else to speak in favor? Do we have anyone to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is closed. An ordinance is presented for council's consideration. A motion would be in order. Councilman Ward.
Move to approve.
Have a motion for approval from Councilman Ward. Councilman Fawcett.
Second the motion, I'd like to make one brief comment, very brief, that I appreciate the work the planning did on this, and it makes sense what you're trying to do here. This is a big undertaking by the Peterson Group. I fully support their initiative to get to this point. Thank you very much. Second the motion.
We have a second from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Williams. You okay? Councilman Goldberg.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Peterson Group and the city for what they did in making this work, and all the effort you put into it. I think it's a great project, and it got my full support. Thank you very much.
Is there any further discussion in the motion? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second for approval. Council members, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance to amend the city of Suffolk, Chapter thirty-one Unified Development Ordinance of the Code of the City of Suffolk, Article Four, zoning, Section thirty-one dash four-twelve, special corridor overlay district, and Section thirty-one dash four-nineteen, mixed-use development overlay district, and Article Six, design and improvement standards, Section thirty-one dash six-oh-three, landscaping standards, and Article Seven, supplemental use regulations, Section thirty-one dash seven-oh-seven, home occupations, Section thirty-one dash seven-fourteen, sign regulations, and Section thirty-one dash seven-seventeen, temporary uses, and Appendix A, definitions, O T A twenty-twenty-dash-zero-zero-one. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the item.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Of course, as you're aware, at your work session today, staff recommended, or presented recommended amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance, editing the ordinance text for regulating signs. And with that, Bob will provide a short overview again as part of this public hearing. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, good evening again. Presented for your consideration is ordinance text amendment O T A twenty-twenty-dash-zero-zero-one, pertaining to our sign regulations within the Unified Development Ordinance. Just as a quick reminder, the journey that we've taken thus far has been, that has brought us to this evening's public hearing, here a list of some of the key milestone dates that occurred. The Supreme Court held a, heard a case and made a decision with regards to Reed versus the town of Gilbert, Arizona, that required that sign ordinances be not content-based in their regulations. Throughout this entire process, I do want to point out that city staff has, you know, worked diligently, not just the planning department, but with other departments, the city attorney's office, in the proposing of the rewrite of the various regulations, the majority of which are contained in Article thirty-one seven-fourteen, the sign regulations. But there are sections, as the mayor pointed out, that are, signs are touched base on in a number of sections of the code. So, as you know, the principal genesis for this was the U.S. Supreme Court ruling that resulted in the conclusion that government regulations cannot be content-based when it comes with regards to sign, that this was an infringement upon free speech of applications. So, essentially, what the court said is that similar signs in similar circumstances need to be treated similarly. Like many communities, our signs are categorized by, currently by, the type of content, the type of sign that it is, a subdivision sign, political sign, menu board, and the like. And the court found that these type of criteria and categorizations are content-based. However, the court also noted that as long as the regulations are not content-based, the sign regulations certainly may continue to establish standards governing matters such as the size, location, brightness, and so forth. So, in light of that, staff was charged with the development of amendments that satisfy the court's ruling, while to the extent practical, continue to maintain the existing standards within the Unified Development Ordinance. We weren't charged with rewriting the entire ordinance to make broad changes. These changes principally addressed, again, as I noted, how we categorize signs, illustrating that content-based categories, eliminating those, and reorganizing in that the signs are categorized by the type of sign that they are. Listed here are simply some examples that illustrate how we have attempted to maintain the existing standards. In this, in this table, we show various commercial signs that would be allowed under the existing regulations, as well as under the proposed regulations, and what those standards are, the height and size and so forth. And for the most part, we have maintained those to the letter. I would note that with regards to residential subdivision entrance signs, we did make some modifications here to allow, rather than one thirty-two-square-foot and four-foot-high sign, that per entrance into a subdivision, you would be able to put up two subdivision entrance signs at forty-eight square foot and six feet high. Now, as I noted, there have been opportunities where we might make some amendments that, based on our experience in dealing with the ordinance, with our experience of changes in technology and the like, that might make sense in areas where we've had experience that some matters were problematic. So, we do have some notable changes that are included in the proposed ordinance. The first that I want to point out is electronic message boards. We do currently allow electronic message boards, but we are proposing that the message of those boards be allowed to change every sixty seconds versus the standard that we currently have of every sixty minutes. These would not be rolling signs, but it does allow for a more frequent change in the message itself. Also, we've included language associated with dealing how bright these signs might be. We've all seen in our travels that particular sign that is just so bright, it is offensive. Part of that is because the standards governing the brightness don't account for the ambient light conditions that surround the sign. A sign of this type at night does not need to be as bright to be seen as it does perhaps during the noontime hour during the day. So, we included those changes. Another notable change is with regards to mixed-use development projects, and for those projects that are located on a restricted-access highway, we are proposing that they be allowed to establish a separate freestanding sign that is forty-five feet in height and four-hundred-and-fifty square foot in area. But again, the project must be located along a limited-access highway and be of fifty acres or greater in size. We also want to govern the number of these type of signs, so we don't have a proliferation along the road corridor, in that each sign, with regards to proximity to each other, could not be any closer than one-half mile. And then finally, we've also proposed some modifications pertaining to window signs, increasing the size of window size from ten to twenty-five percent, and possibly going larger than that, depending on the transparency of the sign, as well as the zoning district that the sign may be located in. And this certainly could be a benefit to businesses, particularly in the downtown area, where you might not have the opportunity for a freestanding sign or some other type of sign associated with your business. I will say that in addition to the amendments that are contained in the proposed ordinance, which is included in your package, staff is also suggesting some additional modifications that I want to take note to. The first is in association with yard signs. The standards that are being proposed were prepared in, based on comments we received previously from this body, associated with temporary signs, in particular yard signs, in that we propose to increase the size of the yard signs in residential districts to eight square feet, with a maximum height of four feet. And then in all other zoning districts, such as commercial districts, yard signs would be permitted at a size of thirty-two square feet versus six feet in height. Similar to the standards addressing size and location and height, the proposed ordinance contained in your package also maintains the existing listing of signs that are prohibited, which includes billboards and off-premises signs, for example. I do want to point out, though, however, that the building industry, particularly the residential building industry, has taken exception to staff's position with regards to maintaining the prohibition against off-premise signs, and that they would like to have that section removed, and they are advocating that such signs be permitted. Other prohibited signs that are currently in our ordinance, as well as in the proposed ordinance, include roof signs. We do have some standards where, on a limited basis, roof signs may be allowed. Others are signs in the right-of-way, animated signs, flashing lights, and the like, that may be problematic, particularly for vehicular traffic and cause problems there. In closing, I want to reemphasize that our proposed ordinance was amended to accommodate the regulations that signs not be content-based. That was our first charge. Our second charge being to maintain the current prescribed standards with regards to size and location, as well as the prohibited signs. And so, we have followed that, while also, again, taking advantage of this opportunity to make any notable changes associated with problems that we've had experience with. Certainly, the code itself is not a stagnant document, and as experience is gained and technology changes, there are opportunities for improvement there. So, with that, staff is recommending that the ordinance as presented be adopted, plus that council consider the addition of the modifications that we previously identified and that are listed here. And I want to point out, this is just a very brief summary. The specifics of these changes were included in your staff report and show the exact changes similar to how we would format any edit to the ordinance itself. So, again, we would encourage you to include in any motion for approval the modification that the Planning Commission provided with regards to section thirty-one four-twelve, the modifications that I briefly went over with regards to yard sign, that were in response to comments and directions received by City Council back in December. And then also, a modification that staff recently picked up on dealing with being sure to cross-reference Chapter seventy-four of the city code, which is associated with A-frame signs that may encroach into the public right-of-way. This deals specifically with regards to the clearance required on a sidewalk. So, with that, this is a public hearing, Mr. Mayor, and I'm available afterwards for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gumas. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and address. We will have a ten-minute period for the proponents, a fifteen-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? First speaker in favor of this ordinance?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Moore, Members of Council, my name is Claudia Cotton. I reside at two-fourteen Charlemagne Drive. I reside at 214 Charlemagne Drive. My business address is 2117 Smith Avenue, Chesapeake. I am here tonight on behalf of the Coastal Virginia Building Industry Association. I wasn't sure whether to come up as a proponent or an opponent, but for the majority of the ordinance, we are in favor of the majority of the ordinance. We ask that you consider one amendment, and we appreciate the opportunity to speak. As you heard Mr. Goomis explain, the court decision is the basis for all the changes that they've had to make, and we believe your staff has done a tremendous job. It's a very difficult task to comb through an ordinance and find all the detail needed to make these changes. I actually have had experience doing just that in a former job with a city here in Hampton Roads. I, along with the city attorney, updated a sign ordinance in the City of Newport News, so very familiar with the task. There's one provision that we ask that you reconsider, and that is Section 31-714D4 under prohibited signs. As Mr. Goomis explained, it's our belief that you can regulate type, location, size of signs, but on a parcel, but not the sign's content. The only way to determine if a sign is off-premise is by reading the content. So we believe prohibiting off-premise signs, which should no longer be addressed in the ordinance, as I mentioned, I do know that that was pulled out of the ordinance that we updated in Newport News. I believe Hampton also did that, and most recently, the City of Virginia Beach. So again, we ask that you delete Number Four in Section D of that prohibited signs, and otherwise support the remainder of the ordinance. And thank you so much for considering our request and for your service to the citizens of Suffolk. Thank you.
Thank you. We have our next speaker to speak in favor. Do we have any other speakers to speak in favor of this ordinance?
I'm Tom Woodward. I live at 227 North Main Street in downtown Suffolk. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, almost everybody misreads Reed versus Town of Gilbert. Lawyers misread it. It does not stand for the proposition that's been stated. I'll tell you what it briefly says. It is a confusing, poorly-written United States Supreme Court opinion, 17 pages. But if you look at it in its context, it speaks to a religious sign, and a religious sign that was treated differently from other signs. It does not speak to what's called "commercial speech." That's the sign that's just referred to. The city can regulate off-premises commercial speech. It can regulate commercial speech in residential areas. Now, I'm not up here about to tell you that you should do away with political signs or religious signs saying, for example, revival at such-and-such a church next week. But to leave the City of Suffolk in the enforcement position of "we can't enforce any sign ordinance" is wrong. And as it's written, what will happen is, your neighbor will have 30 signs stuck in his yard, some of them for dentistry. You saw that. That's not what this particular case Reed says. Two years after Reed, Reed was decided six years ago, so it's not time-sensitive. Two years after Reed, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, Federal Circuit, decided that Reed did not speak to commercial speech. It only speaks to non-commercial speech, religious speech, political speech. You can prohibit all yard signs, like we prohibit all pop-up signs. Nothing says you can't do that. I don't advocate that. But most lawyers don't understand the difference. Not only was a case decided in the Ninth Circuit two years after Reed, the Harvard Law Review, Harvard Law Review, one year after Reed, says it does not apply to commercial speech. Now, commercial speech, they've taken content and commercial speech and put the two together. As I say, it's a very poorly-written opinion. Now, you say, "Well, you say that, but everybody else says this, and Virginia Beach has done it, and Chesapeake has done it." I don't care who's done it. Let's get it right. I'd rather Suffolk be right than follow up like a bunch of sheep. What I'm going to suggest to you is, you take this public hearing and continue it 30 days. Let the city attorney, Mr. Hutchings, examine it. Let him examine the cases I've set forth. Let him examine the Harvard Law Review. Let him make his own decision. I'll be glad to meet with him. He has assistant city attorneys. Ms. Cobb, who's in charge of inspections, I've been dealing with this for three years. Ms. Coleman, who was replaced by Mr. Sample, has been replaced by Mr. Cobb, told me three years ago, "We're going to have to do it with all our sign ordinance." I thought, "What in the world?" I read the sign ordinance, and in only one respect does the existing sign ordinance offend, and that's political signs can't be installed more than 60 days before an election. There's no rational basis for that whatsoever. The state mandates size of political signs, but not time. So let's get it right. Let's continue the public hearing for 30 days. Let Mr. Hutchings examine it. Let him decide where we are. But what you've done is, if you adopt this ordinance, you've let Ms. Cobb hung out to dry, literally hung out to dry, because she can't do anything because the misconstruction of Reed versus Town of Gilbert. It is a poorly-written Supreme Court case. A second-year law student could have written the battle. And two paragraphs in that delineate what they really were talking about would have taken care of all this confusion that is emanated from it. I'm in a minority. Everybody follows along. Everybody says, "Well, so-and-so did it, so-and-so did it, so-and-so did it." But it's up to your city attorney, up to his staff. Let them make the decision and come back within 30 days and say, "Here's what we've done." Again, I'll be glad to meet with him. But don't leave Ms. Cobb in the position she would be in. I came on June 30th. I was appalled at the signs. You saw one tonight. Dentistry? I have to look at that sign in my neighbor's yard? That ain't the way it works. So you all have to decide what to do, but put it off 30 days. Reed was decided six years ago, so it's not time-sensitive, and let's get it right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Woodward. We have our next speaker to speak in opposition. Do we have anyone else to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Here are no additional speakers. This public hearing is now closed. Counsel? An ordinance has been presented for consideration, questions, comments, or a motion. Vice Mayor Bennett.
Thank you, Mayor. And, you know, there were a lot of discussion on this sign ordinance during the work session, and there were some concerns and questions that were asked, sort of similar to what Mr. Woodward was mentioning. I would agree that I would like to see, give him 30 days to go back and look at it and come back and give us a report in 30 days. I don't think it's time-sensitive. So if I'm in order, I would like to make a motion, and we will delay this, or continue the public hearing for 30 days.
The public hearing is closed, right? So I believe that if there's a continuance, it'd just be a continuance to consider it, because the public hearing's already closed. Is that correct, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Attorney?
You closed the public hearing, so the public hearing can't be continued, but the consideration of the item can be continued.
Okay. I'll change that to consideration.
Okay, so we've got a motion on the floor for a 30-day continuance, which once again would have put us at August 18, at the August 18 meeting. But Councilman Johnson.
My question is to you, Mr. Hutchings. What Mr. Woodward asks us to do, does that seem reasonable in your mind?
Well, let me explain to you the current status of the Reed versus Town of Gilbert case. So firstly, back up and talk about Reed versus Town of Gilbert. So Reed versus Town of Gilbert involved three types of signs that were at issue. All of them fall under the category of temporary signs, a sign that's not meant to stay in the ground forever. The first was a sign that talked about anything of public concern. It was basically, the definition is, if it's something other than the other two, I'm going to talk about that sign is a sign of public concern. Standard political speech, like, "I don't want to pay taxes," whatever you want to put in your yard. Those were allowed to stay for an indefinite period of time. The second were political signs, which had, I don't remember the exact deadline, but it had a deadline that was shorter than indefinite. And the final was the signs that were at issue for the church, which were directional signs or event signs, which had a very short period of time. And so the main issue in that case should have been, we have different types of signs that are being treated differently. Is there a reason for them to be treated differently? All nine justices agreed that there was no reason for all three of those signs to be treated differently in terms of time period. The issue comes up with, the majority opinion said that a sign ordinance that requires someone to look at the sign to determine the type of it, type of sign, that was a content-based regulation. And so that would be subject to strict scrutiny. And it's almost impossible for a government to satisfy the test for strict scrutiny. So we usually don't try to go up against that test unless it's something really, really important that we need to protect ourselves from. Then, so in Supreme Court opinions, you will find that the Supreme Court justices don't agree with each other. Even the ones that sign on to the ultimate outcome won't agree with the rationale for the outcome, and that's what happened in this case. So you had three other concurrences, which were different opinions that say, "We agree with the outcome, but we have a little bit different reason for it." The first one was written by Justice Alito. And in his opinion, he was saying, "Well, this new rule doesn't really eliminate all signs," or, because I'll get to the final one in a minute, that said, "What you've done is you've made it so localities can't regulate signs anymore." So to counter that, his concurrence said that, "No, no, no, it doesn't eliminate all signs." And he gives a list of things that are not content-based. And one of those is onsite and off-site signs. So this is what leads to the issue. Mr. Woodward is correct. The Ninth Circuit ruled that it doesn't deal with commercial speech, and what they do is they count up the people who had concurrences to determine, these courts count up the people who have concurrences to determine whether or not they really agreed with the majority opinion. So not only did the Ninth Circuit not agree with them, the Third Circuit didn't agree. They said off-site signs are still content-neutral, and this doesn't apply to those. And the Maryland Court of Appeals. But the Fifth Circuit ruled that, the rule from Reed is, if you have to read the sign, then it's content-based and it's subject to strict scrutiny. The Sixth Circuit agreed with the Fifth Circuit. Less than a month ago, the Supreme Court granted certiorari, so they're going to hear the decision of the Fifth Circuit about whether or not Reed means that if you read the sign, then it, then you cannot, then it's content-based regulation. So at this point, 30 days isn't going to answer that question. We've got a number of courts that are holding that Reed means different things. Now, in terms of the number of signs, that is well-established law in the Fourth Circuit. We are in the Fourth Circuit. There was a case that was decided in 1993 involving Arlington County. Arlington County had a sign ordinance that said that you could have one sign that was like a for-sale sign or a for-rent sign, and then you can have one other sign, and it didn't say what other kind of sign it was. The political parties, both Republican and Democrat, sued the county, along with some others, arguing that that sign ordinance wasn't fair, because it limited you really to one political sign. So if you had a husband and wife who had different opinions about who they wanted to support, they had to decide which candidate they were going to put in their yard. The court said that they couldn't find any reason for a limitation on signs. And they said, in fact, when the U.S. District Court put an injunction in place that said that the county couldn't enforce a limitation on signs, they didn't, there wasn't a problem that arose with too many signs or something that the county could point to in their evidence to say, "This is a problem." So the court ruled that you can't place limits on the number of signs that someone places in their yard. They assumed that a homeowner will care about the aesthetics of their home, but the rule is that unless we can show a problem, we can't place a limit on the number of signs in a yard. So my recommendation on that particular issue is that we go forward with how it's written, and then if we find a problem, we amend it, because then we have the evidence to point to the court and say, "Yes, it is a problem, and this is the only way we can deal with this problem." On the other one, you know, like I said, 30 days isn't going to resolve this issue. We're looking at a year, year and a half, maybe two years before we get a decision from the Supreme Court. They may agree that they didn't mean exactly what the Fifth Circuit said, was that if you read it, that it's content-based. I don't know how they're going to come down on it. The Fourth Circuit hasn't ruled on it. All the Fourth Circuit cases prior to Reed held that things like off-site signs were content-neutral. So at this point, 30 days really isn't going to change the analysis. It's going to be how much risk City Council is willing to take.
Wow.
Did I answer your question?
Well, I guess my whole point in this is, I don't know that 30 days is going to make a difference then. Perhaps, in my humble opinion, is that we need to go ahead and pass the sign ordinance as written and then change it as we need to change it. I'm not sure that it's going to make a difference. Whatever, I'm wide open.
Councilman Fawcett.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, William, for that summation. I think that was pretty good, because it kind of levels it out where we're at. And I think if a year or two down the road, we find that we've got a grinding act somewhere, we can come back here and square it up. So I'd like to make a substitute motion, because there was no second on the motion, to pass the ordinance with the exception, I'd like to amend it by removing, deleting Number Four from Section D of Section 31-714D4.
I think it would be a motion, because we never had a second, so it's not a substitute motion, it would just be the original motion.
Okay, I'll make that an original motion, as I just stated. Thank you.
Okay.
I just wasn't sure where I was at.
Sorry, we have a motion by Councilman Fawcett for approval with the one amendment to that section, which I didn't write down. Mr. Manager?
If I may, Mayor, members of council, if it is the desire to remove Section 31-714D4 prohibited signs, we did have some other amendments that needed to be added to that.
I need to include in that motion the three items that were brought up by planning, which you just described. Is that good enough for you?
Yes, if you'd like me to read them.
You can read it, and I'll go ahead and make that.
We'll get the manager to read those three.
Adoption of the motion to include a final amendment. Edit Section 31-412 SCOD per Planning Commission recommendation pertaining to submission of a signed package. Item Two, modify 31-714 sign regulations pertaining to temporary and yard signs regarding number of signs and dimensions of signs. number of signs and dimensions of signs. Item three, modify Section 31-714 sign regulations as suggested by staff pertaining to temporary A-frame signs aligned with Chapter 74 of the City Code regarding placement. And item four, removal of Section 31-714D4 prohibited signs, all of which were detailed in staff report presented this evening by Mr. Gumas.
I think you did a wonderful job, and I'll go ahead and make that my motion.
Your motion by Councilman Fawcett, Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got just a couple of questions. William, on what was said to us by Mr. Woodward, would it be us to do over the 30 days, come up with how we feel about it? The position that we would take, no matter what the other says, to have that review of what our position is and then go with it? Or is it better to do it the way that we have just made a motion for?
Well, this is something that staff has been working on for a while, and the Planning Commission has reviewed and proposed to you. Really, for staff to go back and do anything, I think that they're, I'm going to speak for Mr. Gumas for a minute, but I think what they're going to come back with is exactly what you have before you. So if what you need is 30 days for council to review this and maybe make some more changes after you've had longer to look at it, then yes, that may be a task you want to do. But I don't believe that staff is really going to bring you back anything different. We've provided, the same information I just provided to you, we've been providing to staff, we provided them with the model ordinance that was developed by a special committee that was set up by local government attorneys around the state. They got together, they put together a model ordinance for everyone to try and work through this. We provided that to staff. We also provided them with the City of Norfolk's ordinance because they were, at the time that they changed their ordinance before the Fourth Circuit, who ruled that their existing ordinance violated Reed. And so they had drafted a new ordinance in the middle of that case, and so the court said, "We're not going to look at the new ordinance. You drafted a new ordinance, so you fixed the problem." So they've had that information from us, and this is what they've come up with. And so I'm not sure, without any additional direction from City Council, that they would come up with anything different than what you have in front of you.
Well, I have the highest respect for Mr. Woodward and his knowledge, his law knowledge. He has been a professor at the William &amp; Murray and other places and other things, and I have a very high degree of his opinion. And I would, I would like in some way, if possible, during this, if we do pass it tonight, to get with him and get some advice and some ideas from him, how it could come out. I think he has a wonderful background, and I would not like to not have his thoughts on this as it goes. So that's where I am. And so I will second it. I would just second the motion, just let it be that. Thank you.
You want to second the Vice Mayor's motion, not Councilman Fawcett's motion? Councilman Fawcett's motion, okay. You're seconding, Councilman Fawcett.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Fawcett and a second from Councilman Goldberg. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Well, after listening to the discussion, it appears that from a legal opinion standpoint or a legal precedent, that not much is going to change over 30 days. But I absolutely agree with Mr. Woodward as far as looking at the ordinance in its current format, it's basic, in my opinion, it's going to be impossible to enforce. And it's very, very vague. And with that being said, there's no doubt in my mind that we are going to have to revisit this ordinance probably sooner than later, before it becomes the Wild West out there. So, and because we will be able to provide, if I understand it correctly, the court's decision is based on content, and of course, a lot of the regulations we have were based on content, be it political, real estate, or what have you. They were a separate set of guidelines. So now, we're going to need to look at our ordinances and put certain restrictions in place that would be applicable to all signs. Would that be a proper analysis?
Well, it kind of depends on how this challenge, and this involves the City of Austin in Texas. It kind of depends on how the challenge that has, that the City of Austin has made in the Supreme Court turns out. It may well be that the Supreme Court's going to say, "No, we didn't mean a simple rule that if you have to read it, then it's content-based." They may go back to the old way that they looked at these things to see if what you were doing for it to be, so the way the court used to look at this is that it had to be, you looked at whether or not you were trying to favor one message over another, or if you were trying to block all messages on something. That was usually the test. This thing that was created in Reed really left something confusing, which is what you see from the concurrences amongst the justices. Justice Kagan wrote that, in her opinion, how that opinion was written would make it, would make the situation that we have exactly here, an impossible task to enforce any type of sign ordinance, that essentially what localities would be left with is clutter caused by signs. And that's why I mentioned Justice Alito's concurrence. He was trying to argue against that by saying, "No, there's still some things that are allowed." And so now courts have interpreted that opinion differently. And so that shows you that there's some confusion about what that opinion means. And so really, we need more guidance from the Supreme Court. It's going to eventually come, it's just at this point, we don't have it.
Okay. So we can look forward to either, if it stands as it is, making changes predicated on that, or if the legal precedent changes or legal term, then it'll address a lot of issues. So we're probably a year out before any of that comes down. But I appreciate all the information that you were able to provide. Councilman Goldberg.
Is it wise for us to pass this now, then? I'm questioning my own second rule. I mean, really, truly, what we need to have, I guess, planning has to have something to use.
Well, I think at this point, we probably do because of the way the law's being interpreted right now and what's being done, but we'll have to go from there. But I think, yeah, I don't think we've got much choice. I mean, that's...
I would recommend that we make the changes now, based on the decision of the Fourth Circuit in the City of Norfolk case, because they didn't look at, so that case involved, in case anybody's not familiar with that case, part of the ODU redevelopment, they were coming down Hampton Boulevard, and the company Central Radio, I don't remember their full name, they had placed a banner up on their building protesting that. The city had cited them for violation because it did not have a permit for it. And so they had some exclusions in their permitting requirements, sort of like we do, that had certain signs, or certain types of signs that required, what the Fourth Circuit said after looking at the Reed case, were content-based definitions. And so they weren't distinguishing between a limited sign based on political speech or a church or things like that. They were looking at it more broadly, sort of like how the Fifth Circuit looked at it. So they said that the sign ordinance that was in effect when the case started was a content-based regulation. But in the midst of the oral arguments before the Fourth Circuit, the City of Norfolk had amended their sign ordinance, and so the court said they cured the problem, so we're not going to go any farther with an injunction, because there's no need for an injunction. There was some argument about attorney's fees and things like that. But as far as the injunction goes, that was moved because they had fixed the problem. If there was a further problem, that would require a new lawsuit. And as far as I know, there was never another lawsuit. So based on that case, and that's really why we provided that information to Planning as well as the Norfolk ordinance, is to keep ourselves with the ability to at least enforce something without a court overruling it as being unconstitutional, even if it's not something that's going to be easy to enforce. And I think, I think really, we're going to have to, this is going to have to be an ongoing process of trial and error to figure out what works, what doesn't work, what fits within what the court says is supposed to happen and what the court says is not supposed to happen.
Have the ability to change it.
We always have the ability to change it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hutchins. Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Fawcett and a second from Councilman Goldberg for approval with the four amendments. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next ordinance is an ordinance to grant relief from the 10-year post-conveyance holding period for a parcel of land identified as tax map parcel 54 asterisk 5C asterisk 1, created through a family transfer conveyance in accordance with Section 31-514 of the Unified Development Ordinance. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the item.
Yes, at this, at this time, Mr. Gumas will provide the overview on this item also. Busy night, Bill.
Yeah, he's earned his money.
We're almost towards the end. We're getting there. So presented for your consideration is a request associated with family transfer 2013-005. And it is a request for relief from the 10-year post-holding period. Back in November of 2013, the Planning Commission, which is the approving authority, approved this family transfer subdivision. Now, I will note that family transfer subdivisions are a special form of subdivision that the City of Suffolk permits. I say they're special in that they are not necessarily available to all property owners, rather, the makeup of your family would dictate whether you have this type of subdivision available to you. And so one of the concerns that we've had experienced over the years is that property owners were using the family transfer subdivision as a method to circumvent our standard subdivision So consequently, the various standards associated with the approval were developed and adopted by City Council. And one of those was, in an effort to help prevent the circumvision of family of transfer subdivisions, is that when you approve a subdivision, the conveyance to that family member, they need to hold on to that property for a minimum of 10 years. They can't just turn around and sell it. Now, recognizing that there are circumstances when relief might be appropriate, there is a relief mechanism from that 10-year holding period. And so the applicant is proposing such relief. The standard for that relief is essentially, there's been a change in circumstances that prohibit or require the family member that received the property through the conveyance of family transfer subdivision to be able to convey that property to another, to a buyer. And that the change in circumstances, one, needs to be something that was not anticipated at the time of the original approval, and that, two, it must be needed to meet a financial obligation that the property owner has, and that the financial obligation cannot be achieved and satisfied by any other assets that the property owner may contain. So consequently, the applicant has approached this body on two previous occasions, back in March of 2017, as well in June of 2018, for a similar request. And the City Council at that, both of those times, concluded that no change in circumstances has occurred that was not anticipated, and that meets the test with regards to the satisfaction of a financial obligation. Staff has reviewed the application that the applicant has presented and the arguments presented to us, and we have come to the same conclusion that with regards to the relief mechanism that is available, that the applicant's application fails to meet that standard, and consequently, we have recommended denial of the request. This is not a public hearing. The applicant did come forward and, at the beginning of the meeting, to speak on his behalf, and they're available, should you have any questions of them, as well as myself. Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, where are we? Sorry, I get for reading a book, I'm half asleep again. Okay. Do we need a motion? Where am I? Okay, at this time, we've been presented a motion for consideration. Was it pleasure of counsel? Questions, comments? Councilman Fawcett?
Um...
I'm reading the narrative.
I've been here.
Nope.
You cut yourself off.
You cut yourself off. Cut yourself back off. His name's not even up there anymore. There it is.
There you go.
They took you right off the screen. You just disappeared. I think Andy took you off. It was like, boom, no more Councilman Fawcett.
You know, I've heard the gentleman come up earlier tonight and talk a little bit about this. And this young man, he's been in this property now for eight of the 10 years. And I'm reading through some of the narrative, and I know in '17, I was here, in '18, I was here. But I've read some of the narrative about some of the divesting things that have happened to his family in the last few years. And I'm really sitting here thinking, 10 years, he's already done eight years, so we've got two years left on this thing, but he needs some help. He's got family issues that I think, in my opinion, warrant some help. And he's been patient in the audience here tonight to see how we were going to react to this. I'm going to tell you straight up, I don't have it in me to disapprove this. I'm looking at, from a compassion side, how would I feel if I was in this situation? I know we got 10 years, but it's a circumstantial issue. It's not because they were in four years or five years and bailed on us because it wouldn't happen. They've done the majority of the time. It's not the first time we've let something go that had eight years in it. If I remember, there's probably been one, maybe, or two in our time. But I am not going to sit here tonight and deny this couple, this family, the opportunity to do what they need to do to get their lives back on track. And that's just the way I feel, and I'm going to make a motion to approve the request of the ordinance, because I do not have it in me to disapprove this. I'm being a little more passionate tonight, and I think it's warranted. I don't know how everybody else will feel about this, but that's how I feel about it. And if we flip the coin, and I realize we have rules, but if we flip the coin and anybody else is in the same boat, they'd be sitting in that audience asking for the same relief. That's all I have, Mayor.
Councilman Johnson?
Sometimes we break the rules. I'm going to second it.
We have a second from Councilman Johnson. Councilman Goldberg?
Mayor, I couldn't agree more with Councilman Fawcett and Councilman Johnson on this. I think it's a family thing. We need to help them get... We need to help them get back into straight and help them out as much we can. They have tried to live up to what we asked them to do. They have stood there, and now they have another crisis they need to deal with, and I just think it's time. So I'm in support of the motion.
We have a motion in a second for approval. Was there any other discussion of the motion? I also agree with Councilman Fawcett. I voted in favor of this exemption a couple of years ago because I believe the family transfers, there were some circumstances involved, and then also I look at the intent. The reason for these ordinances is to not allow individuals to circumvent the intent of the law. And I didn't feel like that was the case last time. And I know we have written within the statute that there's an obligation to see, if there's a financial obligation, to see if it can be satisfied from other assets, other assets. And I think it's kind of a safety net in there, but to tell someone, well, sell your house and sell your boat, and then you don't have to worry about doing a family transfer, I think it's the type of thing that we need to look at. And these, just like conditional use permits, give us the latitude to make a decision based on individual circumstances, rather than the letter of the law, shall we say. It's not etched in stone. So with that being said, obviously, I do support it as well. And if there's no other discussion, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to one, with Vice Mayor Bennett voting in opposition.
Our last ordinance is, I think it's the last one, I hope it's the last one. Last ordinance is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to accept a deed of open space easement over the common passive open space within Phase 2 of the cluster subdivision Platte-Nansman Reserve, tax map number 19, parcel 4A, account number 304209000, FSB 2021-00005. Mr. Manager, please present an overview of the item.
Yes, Mayor. Vice Mayor. Members of council, Mr. Gumas will provide the last presentation this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Manager. Presented for your consideration is an ordinance to authorize the city manager to accept the deed of open space pertaining to common passive open space for the cluster subdivision of Nansman Reserve. These types of requests come before you periodically in that with regards to cluster subdivisions, the open space that is passive, in order to maintain that open space in perpetuity, requires the deed of easement placed over it, and this ordinance will authorize the city manager to enter into the agreement establishing such an easement over this property so that the open space, passive open space for this section is preserved in perpetuity. Previously, Phase 1 has been received in such a manner, and this ordinance would allow for Phase 2 to be accepted as well.
Okay, an ordinance has been presented for council's consideration. The motion's in order. Was the pleasure of council. Councilman Fawcett?
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and move for approval of the ordinance.
We have a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. We have a second. Councilman Williams?
A second.
Councilman Williams with a second. Do we have any further discussion of the motion? Councilman Goldberg?
No.
You good? All righty. Is there any other discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We will now move to resolutions, and we, thank goodness, we have no items under this portion of the agenda. We also have no items under staff reports. We'll now move to motions. We have a motion to schedule a city council work session for Wednesday, August 18th, 2021, at 4:00 p.m., unless canceled, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Johnson?
I move.
Got a motion from Councilman Johnson. Councilman Goldberg?
Second.
And a second from Councilman Goldberg. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council, prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We'll now move to non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers at this time?
Yes, Mayor Doeman. Each person participating under the item of business entitled "Non-Agenda Speakers" shall limit their remarks to the services, policies, and affairs of city government, and shall be permitted five minutes for the purpose of presenting his or her matter. Speakers appearing before city council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, engage in personal attacks, or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Our first speaker this evening is Michael Rouse, 3440, Bob White Lane, representing self regarding speed limit on Bob White Lane. Mr. Rouse, are you present? The next speaker is Carolyn White, 4216 Coltrane Avenue, representing the Pewsville Civic League regarding Pewsville items.
Next time y'all have a long 10 o'clock meeting, I'm gonna bring a blanket, okay, and a pillow. It's ridiculous. I just want to let you all know that on January 12, 2021, we had the Pewsville Neighborhood Drainage update from the city of Chesapeake, and Chesapeake did their work, and Suffolk has always said they're waiting on Chesapeake. They put in the four coverts in 2018. Suffolk hadn't done anything to the coverts since they've been put up. Now's the time to get to work. While everybody's being compassionate, while everybody is going on and doing things that they think that needs to be done, redistricting is coming, you know? Okay, we got three councilmen's in our district. Redistricting is coming, and I will be checking, because we have houses that are being built, and they have not been recorded, so maybe we gotta check that out, too. Thank you, and have a wonderful night.
The next speaker is Pamela Brandy, 5016, Porle Street, Chesapeake, Virginia, representing the Pewsville Civic League regarding Pewsville.
City council, back again talking about the same issues and concern. This is amazing to me that you all sit here and approve different ordinance and everything. You don't fully understand what's going on, and you talk back and forth to the developers and stuff, but yet you're not listening or even talking to the residents at the same meeting with Pewsville Civic League, Chesapeake, and Suffolk. Mr. Moore, Councilman Ward, we all spoke together, and we talked about it. Looked at your proposed plan that you all have for the master drainage plan, and it was always a proposal, but that was what you were acting upon. At that meeting, we found out that that plan was no longer existing. Your proposal was not existing because you're allowed builders to build right where y'all path was coming for the ditch, and then you also talked about, you know, y'all was going to look at getting some property to try to purchase and everything, eight lots. Also, it was asked, why don't y'all just open up Taylor Avenue and open up, put a retention point behind the Pewsville Park to get the water off of us? Okay? We're gonna check into it. Haven't heard anything back about that at all. You're letting builders come in and build on top of residents that been paying their money at the, you know, planning commission yesterday. It was brought up then and today that you have not talked to the residents, but yet you still approved it. You're not even sure about how to do things, you're talking about amending things. Okay? How about just doing what you said? You know, these new developments are coming up now. Our issues, several of the other communities' issues are not new, they are old, but yet you're building all over Suffolk. And again, when it talks about, you know, your ordinance and everything, paper streets, you are not supposed to build on paper streets. However, you approve through planning and all the different departments. You allow a builder to put, you allow builders to build on the ends of the streets, and then they turn around and change the front door to the regular street, but yet the paper street, you had to disturb it to run power and lines to that, but yet you don't allow the other owners to be able to purchase, build on their own property, because you didn't do what y'all ordinance said about the paper streets. Okay? And then you say, keep coming out. I welcome you to come out, and I've been working for so long. Well, how long do you think we've been working? We've been coming out, we've been speaking, but the only thing you hear is that the developers are doing what they're doing. And then yesterday, the developer was saying, well, we paid, you know, our fees and stuff. What about the fees that your residents paying and being paying? How about give all the residents back their money that they've been paying over the years? Listen to the people that voted you in, because the election is coming again, and we're gonna vote you out. It is not fair to continue to do these things, and you don't hear the people that voted you in. And I shall stand on Dune Ronomy 23, 21 to 23. You all made a vow to do what's in the best interest of the people, as well as the community. And guess what? The people is the community. And you talk about doing, you know, helping the people. You're not helping when you're not allowing people to be able to build on their own property, not being able to get to the property that they purchased, and they are flooding. And there's a lot of other issues that are going on in the community, not just the flooding and the drainage, urban development. And now, and then you talk about wetlands, everything is wetland, but there's only certain ones that can actually build and grow. It's time for y'all to really take a look at it, and before you pass the ordinance and come back, oh, well, let's pass it now, and then we come back and do an amendment. Find the facts. Take the time to do the research, and then also put the information out so everybody can hear and know, and don't wait till you get together and put together a 287-page and want everybody to read it when y'all don't even understand half of the stuff. Look at your people and turn up the heat.
Our final speaker this evening is Kelly Hangler, 9345 Eclipse Drive, representing the Crittenon Eclipse Hobson Heritage Civic League regarding public participation.
I'm gonna be watching this five minutes as well. Good evening. Thank you for being here and of service. My name's Kelly Hangler. I announced myself earlier. My personal address is 9345 Eclipse Drive in Suffolk, Virginia. And earlier, Ms. Claudia Holland came up, she misspoke. We represent for Crittenon Eclipse and Hobson, it was Chukituck who could not come forward, and we did have some folks from Oakland here tonight, and they did have to leave earlier. So I just wanted to make sure Hobson didn't think that we were saying that we weren't here representing them as well. The challenges that we face in 2021, we need some languaging and some support. All of us has been through the pandemic. It's not over, okay? The other variants were great at risk right now. Our elders are still in their homes, not all the churches are open, we've barely started some services, and so people in their homes for their health and their lives, as a healthcare provider, I'm telling you, are in the middle of a protracted chronic trauma from this pandemic. And yet, one of the things that we have talked about amongst our civic leagues is the fact that the world has continued. It hasn't stopped. And as of the planning commission yesterday, and once again, Nansman County, 1646, we need to stop ghosting the rest of Suffolk. I love downtown Suffolk, I do, but the history of downtown Suffolk at 1742 doesn't meet the needle. We had to literally go to the General Assembly to dissolve the incorporated town of Holland. Give it respect. Of Whaleyville, give it respect. These were unincorporated and incorporated towns. There are areas that still remain ghosted, and guess what? The areas that are declared historic on the National Historic, the towns that were outside of that UDO that even the developers and the builders are screaming about because it's 25 years old, and yeah, it's been cherry picked, okay? But not in support of customizing it to this community and updating it in a way where we don't have village center, which is being abused now, where homes are being built smack up against Godwin Boulevard that's faced with flooding issues so that people can't safely get out of the very homes that are being permitted to be built in a community that doesn't have an MS4 permit for the city. It's not designated, the last time our permit was designated, it did not include Chukituck, which is the headwaters of Chukituck Creek, waters of the United States, okay? Nor down Pembroke to the Pow Wow site, to the Nansman Indian site at the Nansman River. Our MS4 permit therefore requires that whatever happened out there on Everett's Road, okay, had to be given an exception on top of an exception on top of the exception. I still don't know legally yet, because yes, we have land use attorneys for that, too. Citizens are tired of having to be in their community with limited resources and having to get legal advice. Why is this happening next to me? It's called prior use. We hear prior right, and that is what these village centers have. That is what these unincorporated, incorporated towns have. We can keep saying by right, but any good land use attorney will tell you that the prior use existing in our most historic villages, thank you, Holland, Whaleyville, Driver, Mr. Fawcett, okay, Crittenon Eclipse Hobson, all of these communities have been together sustainably since before 1646, I'll let you know, and the pre-colonial people that were here before us. So it's called prior right. We need to get real real about screaming by right every two seconds. And yes, everyone wants the most for our city. So please, builders out there, I've talked to a lot of them, please come forward and advocate and let the people in the community know what you'd like to bring into the community, because we have a lot more growing to do, don't we? All of us council members up there representing us, knowing things, we're at home trying to work our jobs, and you're working your jobs plus coming to represent us. And thank you again, Mr. Almore. I can't tell you how much I am telling people, hallelujah, with the amount of infrastructure that we have to update, that we actually have the city manager with a background in engineering, okay? Beyond my pay grade, right? We have a very old history here. We have to cherish it. I agree with you, sir, Mr. Johnson. A circle around every village center right now, not next week, is called prior right. God bless Old Nansman County, God bless downtown Suffolk, God bless America. Good night.
That concludes the speakers, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now move to new business. Are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
We do have a motion to nominate and appoint Michael McBride to the Suffolk Redevelopment Housing Authority Board of Commissioners.
Shelley Barlow? Didn't push a button? Okay. Councilman Johnson?
Move for approval.
Sorry, I could have done that.
Councilman Ward?
Sorry.
We have a motion for approval for Councilman Johnson and a second from Councilman Ward. Any further discussion of the motion? If not, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
And do we have any other new business this evening? Mr. Manager?
The manager has something.
Mr. Councilman Fawcett?
Setting a public hearing for August the 18th about the transportation plan that we have to come up with. we have to come up with. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Manager?
Yes, mayor, council. Uh, yes, motion is appropriate. It's time to hold a public hearing on August 18th. Uh, I want to see councilmen in order to receive public comment on the proposed changes to transit routes, uh, per the Transit Master Plan.
I move to approve that, mayor.
Okay, we got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett, Councilperson Butler Barlow.
Second.
Second from Councilperson Butler Barlow. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Councilmen, please prepare to vote. Please cast your votes. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Do we have any other new business this evening? Anyone would like to bring up? Hearing none. We will move to announcements and comments, and at this time, we'll ask Media and Community Relations Assistant Director Tim Kelly to come forward.
Good evening, mayor. Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. We wanted to open tonight's announcements by again congratulating the city manager and city attorney for their city council appointments. City Manager Almore and City Attorney William Hutchings were sworn in on Wednesday, July 14th in a ceremony here at City Hall. Wish, we wish them the best as they continue to serve the citizens of Suffolk in each of their roles. The Suffolk Public Works Department would like to thank residents experiencing delays with their curbside recycling collection provided by TFC for their patience. Residents are advised that if their collection is not picked up on the regular scheduled day to leave the recycling cans at the curb or street for a collection the following day. Weekly trash collection is operating as normal. Residents are reminded that recycling and trash cans should be placed at the curb or street line no earlier than 5:00 PM on the day before the scheduled collection and no later than 7:00 AM on the day of the scheduled collection. You can get your holiday shopping done early with the Suffolk Visitor Center Gift Shop's annual sale, be July 23rd to 25th, with 15% off all items, including posters, books, ornaments, stationery, tees, postcards, glassware, totes, and more. Visitor Center Gift Shop is open daily from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM at their location at 524 North Main Street. A reminder that the Commissioner of Revenue Susan Draper and her office are offering a drive-through high mileage adjustment event in the City Hall parking lot on Wednesday, July 28th. That'll be from 3:00 until 7:00. If you own a passenger car or light duty truck that has over 15,000 miles per year, you may be eligible for reduction in your car tax. For additional information, please call the Commissioner of Revenue's office at 514-4260. The National Night Out Duck Pluck is set for Friday, July 30th at the Parks and Rec TGF Concert at Bennett's Creek Park. The TGF event starts at 6:00, and the Duck Pluck will be held during the band's first break. The band that night is buckshot, by the way. You can win great National Night Out prizes at the Duck Pluck, and entry into the drawing is free. You can stop by the National Night Out tent also for treats for the kids. And speaking of National Night Out, as noted earlier, big night Tuesday, August 3rd. If you want to find out where the parties are, you can visit the Suffolk National Night Out website at sufficnn.com. On the COVID front, the Western Tidewater Health District is reporting a rise in COVID cases over the past three to four weeks. The seven-day average of cases has risen from less than one per day to now over eight per day. As for vaccinations in our district, that number is slowly increasing, with almost 41% of all residents and just over 50% of adults being fully vaccinated at this time. Now, we've heard news across the country, of course, of the Delta variant being the primary COVID strain. But as of now, there have been no lab reports of that strain here in the Western Tidewater Health District, but it is suspected to likely be in our area. And as previously noted in previous council meetings, the Suffolk Health Department and Virginia Department of Health are directing residents seeking a vaccine to visit vaccinefinder.org to locate where you can go. Residents with questions about the vaccination process can contact the State Call Center at 1-877-VAX-NVA. And again, we leave you with the ways that we reach out to our residents and business owners, and the number in the upper left-hand portion of your screen, the 514-4000 number. If you need to get connected with city services or have questions, we're there to assist. With that, say goodnight.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Uh, we'll now move on to announcements from City Council. Councilman Williams.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, mayor. I'm gonna be very brief. I know it's been a long evening. First, I would like to thank the city manager and staff for taking care of some issues that the citizens had in Saratoga regarding Battery Avenue and Brook Avenue near the playground. So thank you for taking care of that, you and staff. Also, uh, Mr. City Manager, I would like to have more clarity as what the procedure is when it comes to citizen maintaining city-owned property, which is adjacent to their property. Uh, I know of some property owners, uh, who have taken care of city-owned property for 10 or more years. So is there something in place where those property owners or the property can be conveyed to the adjacent property owners because they've been taking care of this property at their own expense? Uh, also, um, just like an update on East Washington Street, uh, from the railroad track up to Liberty Street and County Street, um, on the lighting for those areas, on the light poles. Um, you know, once you cross the railroad track, there's no lighting there on the poles, and it looks, it looks forgotten. Um, we really need to have those poles lit up like the rest of downtown. And I haven't had the opportunity to talk to Mr. Goldberg, Councilman Goldberg, about this, but I've, um, visited other cities, and I noticed that downtown corridor have the lights draping across the street. You know, it really makes a difference. I mean, it really bring out the downtown area. Maybe if you can take a look at that, and Councilman Goldberg, we can get together and, um, maybe make that happen to enhance the beauty of our city, especially the downtown corridor. And with that, I'd like to say goodnight.
Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you, thank you, mayor. My one again? Okay, thank you. Uh, yeah, I look forward to working with you, and give me a call on that, and I'd be glad to discuss that with you, see what we can do there. Um, National Night Out, I'm looking forward to it again. It's always been fun, and I'm looking forward to it on the 3rd. Uh, I hope everybody will come out. Uh, also, um, we've had some entertainment down at the waterfront. It's been excellent, uh, last weekend. Wasn't a lot of people down there, but the young lady named, uh, I think it was Kellogg was there. She was excellent. And so I just recommend you go out to Bennett's Creek. I think that's coming up the next four, four weekends or so. I do recommend you go out and support that. They have just excellent talent, and, uh, it's good for, for everyone to support that. Uh, Al and, uh, William, congratulations. It's good for, for, for y'all, and I appreciate what y'all are doing for the city. Uh, and I do want to say a couple of things about the vaccine. I have, uh, lost a couple of other friends, uh, in recent days, not around here, but other places that decided they were not going to get the vaccine, and now they have passed away because they got the variant and they went into hospital, and they have died. And, uh, one was, uh, late, late 40s, maybe early 50s, and the other one was in, in the 60s. So I, I just recommend that you talk to your family and your friends, and please ask them to get the shot and get the medicine. It does work. It, it's working, and, um, it's, it's a fact. Even though you might still get it, you won't get it as bad, and you'll have something, some defense. And, uh, and also protect your neighbor. It's not all about you. It's about protecting your neighbor, too. So I recommend you get the shots. Thank you very much.
Councilman Ward?
Yes, I also like to congratulate Al and William. Uh, I know this can be a plus for the, the city. Looking forward to working with you. Uh, I'm glad that, um, came out and talked about the trash, because we did have some problems of, uh, not getting on Thursday, went around, and it was getting on Friday. And we did get it Friday late. Couple of people took any garbage cans, but, uh, Lisa, they know now, I hope they seen it on TV, and now we can make sure that if it don't come one day, it'll come the next day. And Ms. Klink, I, I'm waiting hard because I know National Night Out will be great because we missed one, and I know you outdo yourself every year, so I'm looking forward to National Night Out, and thank you. But I would say God bless.
Councilperson Butler Barlow?
Um, I just, I want to, um, all of us to think back to just after 6 o'clock when the Explorers were introduced, and what a great moment that was to see those young people that are, um, participating in that program. I thought that was a great, good news, um, way to start this long meeting. Um, I did want to say thank you to everyone who participated tonight. Appreciate everyone's hard work and input and their thoughts and their thoughtful comments. Um, it's, uh, it's been a long evening, but I think we've had some good conversations. Um, I would like to echo Councilmember Goldberg's comments about the vaccination and the fact that people need to continue to be diligent and to get the vaccination. I think that's excellent advice. And, um, lastly, I would like to wish a happy 93rd birthday to former council, former council member, uh, Joseph Barlow Senior, who celebrated his birthday today. And with that, I'll say goodnight.
Councilman Johnson?
And Chief, Chief Shelley took my thunder about that post 124 because I was gonna say the same thing. I'm proud of our police department, and Boy Scouts are real important to me, and this group is an amazing-looking group, so I see great things ahead. And if I can help in any way, happy to. Um, I, I have a sad note. That's, I, and it's important to me and the people of Holy Neck. We lost a 24-year-old Jaquan Yuli, and his family lived up on Leafwood Road in an automobile accident. This young man graduated not from school here, but went to Indian River so he could get his football training and was getting ready to go to Virginia State and do great things in the football world. And, um, tragic accident happened. He's gonna be buried tomorrow. And to the family, to the Yuli family, I'd send our deepest regrets. He will be sorely missed. Thank you.
Councilman Fawcett?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Um, I want to thank Diana, Andy, the whole crew. If you look around the room, you'll see new televisions. Nobody's paid any attention to them. So now people can see instead of the small televisions, we got bigger ones, new cameras, so we all get to look good on TV from here on out. So thank you, Mr. Manager, for helping put the money into till for it and giving Diana the green light, and Andy done a good job. So I appreciate it. Um, you investor, thanks again for both Al and, and William. Great. Look forward to all the great things you're gonna bring here for the next, uh, however many years you're here for, right? Um, go out and get that tax relief. That's a big deal. If you want to get your, you know, personal property down, and you meet the criteria, and you have the mileage in the year of the vehicle, and it meets it, she's definitely gonna give you the credit and, uh, help you out there. It might save a couple of bucks. I can't tell you, we've talked about this over and over and over about COVID. Yeah, we're on a little tick up a little bit on the numbers, and yes, there's constantly places every day that people can get vaccinated. I can tell you from working in that field, I would like to have seen more people get vaccinated than the ones I did see. You need to, we all need to promote it. Go out and talk about it and see if people will go out and do it. Most of us here have had it, and we're doing fine. Not to say that, that couldn't change for somebody, but your odds are better with the shot than it is without the shot. So try to influence some people to do it so we don't go back in the fall this year wearing masks and going back to mandates. It wouldn't take much for it to go through the roof, and we go into that process. Um, I'd like to thank firefighters, uh, and the PD this past couple of weeks. Uh, firefighters have been out there getting killed. They've been, I mean, had some pretty good, uh, structure fires. The high-rise downtown was a little bit of a challenge for them. Uh, the house fire out in the Northern End, uh, certainly gut going, and, uh, a couple of firefighters got a little warm. Chief, what you're doing with all these people and helping them and bringing your Explorers in is great work. It's just, maybe we can get some young police officers out of this deal. Just keep working at it. Um, National Night Out, I can't thank Diana and the police department and all the participants in National Night Out. It takes a, a village of people to get it up off the ground and get it going. You put a lot of effort and time in it. Please come out on National Night Out and enjoy a few hours, and if you sweat a little bit, it's not anything a shower won't take care of later in the day. So I'm looking forward to, uh, the kickoff that night here in council chambers. So with that, um, I probably missed something, but I'm gonna call it quits because everybody wants to go home. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Thank you. Uh, I have a few items. Uh, first, I'd like to say congratulations to Mr. Almore and Mr. William, and also to Carlos for being your new appointment as well. Uh, looking forward to y'all working together and, uh, continuing to get the city to the next level. Also, I really want to commend again, um, Police Department Chief Chandler and, um, Lieutenant Merrick and Sergeant Key with the Explorers. That is something that really has been dear to my heart, uh, for some time, and I'm so happy to see that being re-implemented, wherein that we can get some young people back involved in, uh, the training and being a part of, uh, the law enforcement here in the city. And I think with, uh, Merrick and Key being the leaders in that, and both of them came through the program, and they can really be a great star and mentor to those young people and, um, giving them the right direction to go in, and hopefully they will follow in their footsteps in becoming police officers. I know all of them will not probably, but hopefully a lot of them will. And I'm sure this program will continue to grow as the word get out there because it has been some years since this has taken place. So again, congratulations, um, Chief Chandler, for getting that pushed on through with the city manager. I have something that, uh, I talked to Patrice for some time back before he left, and he started, uh, talking about it, so I'm glad to see it come to fruition. So again, I want to say thank you and all that, uh, we're involved with that. Uh, also, uh, I'm glad that we saw in the, uh, money that was being appropriated for mental health, for a position in the police department. That is something I've heard a lot about in the community and whatnot, and I think that position is well-deserved, and that will help you and the police department when they are going out in the community, trying to deal with some of these issues that you have to go out and be confronted with. So I'm glad to see that, um, being implemented as well, and that will take something, the question that I've had some people ask me about mental health and being how the police department was handling that. So I think that will give some answers to them about, um, the mental health problem, uh, situation that y'all be dealing with. Also, Mr. Manager, I saw that Norfolk has started now, where in certain areas in Norfolk where they are able to give some type of radio warning for trains at certain times so people will be able to know that they can change their route. So I hope that we can look into that and see if we can implement some of that in Suffolk with all the crossing that we have, that we will be able to get some of the main ones, like Willrow Road and, uh, Nansman Parkway, to, uh, maybe try to get that where we can, uh, be a part of that so we can make the, uh, they can go on radio or call whatever, uh, how that works, where they'll be able to know the time of the train, especially if it's doing work hours or something, that they'll be able to, uh, get around, around that. Also, on Bob White, uh, I, I know they've been doing a lot of construction down there. I would like for you to have the police sort of look at that. The gentleman had to leave, but I'd like for him to take a look at what they have with the speeding there on, um, Bob White Lane. And National Night Out, I'm looking forward to that. That's something that, um, I think we all have been looking for. We've missed it last year, so we're looking forward to getting out, trying to see some of the, uh, residents again. And my final comment is gonna be about the, uh, I know, uh, some of the council members have mentioned it, but that is something that has really been perking my ears through some of my constituents and whatnot about the vaccine and the numbers going up. So I'm, I agree with a whole lot with the comments that have been made about this is for real. And I hope people really, uh, take advantage of going out, taking the shots. I know, uh, Cannon Baptist Church just this past, last Thursday, they had, uh, the bus from Hampton Institute to come out there from 10:00 to 2:00. I haven't been able to find out how many people they served, but they are trying to get out in the community and reach, uh, the communities that need it. So if you have areas that you would like for, um, to get that type of service, I, I know that they are, uh, looking for places that they can go in the areas that, uh, underserved and give that service to the people where it would be convenient to them. And with that, I would say goodnight.
All righty. It has been a very, very long evening, and I want to thank council. I want to thank staff. We had a lot of good discussions about numerous items. I want to, um, let Mr. Gumas know, I don't know if you got paid time and a half tonight or not, but if you didn't, at least you deserved it because, uh, you did carry the brunt of, uh, everything we had to talk about tonight. Mr. Hutchings, I appreciate the legal advice. You kind of got to work out yourself. I was very impressed with your knowledge of the sign ordinance and setting the precedence in what had been done in different courts, be it the circuit courts. in what had been done in different courts, be it the circuit courts or nationally Supreme Court wise, so I appreciate the legal advice. Mr. Manager, I appreciate you kicking me a couple of times and waking me up. I wasn't sleeping, I was actually reading the narrative on the other one when I looked like I dozed off. But I did get out in the last couple of weeks, it was nice to actually get out and do a couple of ribbon cuttings, the fabric shop on Bennett's Creek Road, Tywater Animal Clinic, which is right on Constance Road, opened up a new facility, 6,000 square feet, with a lot of resources and assets to, to be able to do some procedures that our citizens and a lot of the neighboring areas have to go out of town to get for their pets. The oath of office ceremony for our manager and the vestiture ceremony for William Hutchings made it official, I guess it was kind of official, you're already married, but you know, we let everybody know. Very nice event and I look forward to working with you as the interim mayor for the next three and a half years or so. I attended the Virginia Mayor's Institute in Charlottesville on Thursday and Friday and Councilman Williams was there and Councilperson Butler-Barlow was there on Thursday. I had the pleasure of staying Thursday and Friday and I learned a little something while I was up there. I learned that you can chase tequila with pickle juice and it takes the taste out of your mouth. That's what I was told. I didn't do it, but that's just what I was told. And along with a few other things. I am also very, I'm elated about the position that we created within the police department for a mental health consultant. And I also want it to be realized that this individual is also there to support our law enforcement personnel, just as much as they are the outside, if not more. Our law enforcement personnel are put in circumstances that none of us can relate to unless we've done it. And for them to have that resource to go to, I think will do amazing things for not only the officer, but the officer's family and I hope that we use this professional to the, to our best ability to accomplish that as our fir-, as our first mission, along with the training that they'll receive in regards to their interaction with other individuals and our citizens. The explorers program, I mean, it's, it's great. I mean, there's not a better way when we, when we look at our fire department, how our fire department's staffed. I mean, now, I mean, in the old days, a lot of those individuals in the fire department started off at 16, 17, 18 years old as volunteer firemen. They graduated from high school and then made it a career. And this is the same type thing. If we have our youth who have an interest in law enforcement and they're able to get some hands-on and working with the officers, I know the officers that they're working with, I mean, to be exposed to these people, these folks with the experience that they have and their attitudes and their work ethic and to be from your hometown, I don't think there would be anything more rewarding than not only being a law enforcement officer, but doing it in your own hometown, where you run into people that you knew, which you run into people that you went to elementary school with. And a lot of that we have right here in Suffolk and we're fortunate that we do. Happy birthday to Mr. Joe Barlow. I didn't know today was his birthday, but as a lot of you know or don't know, that was my predecessor on city council and someone I've always, as far as I'm concerned, I've always used as, as a role model when it comes to being a true public servant. He not only served here, but he was on the school board, he's engaged in the community and one of the most honorable men I've ever had the good, good fortune to know. And with that, I think I get everything. National Night, August 3rd. I've already put the orders in, it's not going to be over 85 degrees, I'm sure, but it'll be nice to get out again, you know, after last year and not being there last year, I, you know, I'm sure it will be quite the event. Ms. Clink will make sure that everything's as it always is and I'm looking forward to it. And with that, I'll go to my quote of the night, which is from Eleanor Roosevelt, who actually must have been pretty outspoken for, you know, back then females didn't really speak up like they kind of do right now, but I think Eleanor Roosevelt stood her own ground and she was the wife of our 32nd President Franklin Delano Roosevelt. And that quote is, "In the long run, we shape our lives and we shape ourselves. The process never ends until we die and the choices we make are ultimately our own responsibility." And I think everybody should heed that. One of the issues we have is everyone up here, everywhere, everywhere, needs to take responsibility for their own actions. And from there, I think the outcomes will take care of themselves. So with that, I will entertain a motion for adjournment and we have volunteers already. Vice Mayor Bennett?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting, but before I do, I'd just like to say, and I had it noted and didn't even notice, happy birthday to my friend Joe, for 93 years and we took a picture together Wednesday and he, he and Lynn wanted to take a picture with me, so I have a picture. And he was telling me about his birthday coming up today and I forgot it, so again, thank you for reminding me. With that, I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion for adjournment from Vice Mayor Bennett and Councilman Fawcett?
Second the motion.
With a second. Would anybody like to discuss the motion? Assuming we won't be discussing the motion, we will call for the vote. Council people, prepare to vote, please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Vice Mayor, can you cast your vote, please? Vice Mayor, I need you to cast your vote, please, thank you.
There you go.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned.